All right, sorry for the delay. We were just in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to length of bargaining. For EMTA, keep an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. At this time, we'll open it up to public input. All righty.
Want to see the beanpot intro?
Uh, they can pull over minutes.
I have, ma'am chair, I have finally actually logged on to YouTube and watched the watched the videos for the December third and December seventeen minutes. As you know, I've been required to do that because we had a mistake in one man respecting who made and who seconded a vote, which resulted in part in the open meeting law complaint. We want to like to avoid that expense in the district. So I did spend the time today. I noted a spelling error on the, what is factor referencing? Do you respect referencing? On the December third minutes, calendar spelled wrong under, in the mid part of the paragraph under FY twenty budget calendar. With that amendment, I moved it to December third and December seventeen minutes be accepted as submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I agree.
I didn't vote to get.
Oh, you did, sorry. All right, great. High School Student Advisory, who's going first? Carrie.
Hi, I'm Carrie White, the representative from the class of twenty-two. So far, since last time, the student government is still in the process of planning a fundraiser. Our last ideas didn't really work out, so now we have a new one, and we're gonna be selling hype socks, and we're in touch with a company, so we're just getting that started.
I'm sorry, Carrie, say that again, please.
Um, yeah, we're gonna be selling hype socks. It's from a company that reached out to Mr. Parga, I think. And then freshmen took midterms for the first time, and I think that we were definitely a little stressed since we didn't know what to expect, but we got through and it wasn't that bad because it was just math and language. And second semester electives have begun, and everyone has new classes for their second half of the year, which is exciting. And now that it's been half of a year at the high school, the freshmen are really used to it now, so I think that they love it here. And semi is coming up soon, and the freshmen are getting really excited about it. And it's just about the end of winter sports, which is sad for a lot of the freshmen who played this season, but I think everyone had pretty good seasons. And lastly, everyone is looking forward to February break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, can I put you on the spot for one second? What is a hype sock?
Um, I'm not sure. That's the name of the company.
Sorry.
The name of the company is hype sock, but I think we can just customize them however we want.
For fourteen ninety-five, you can find out in person.
What?
Fourteen ninety-five, you can find out.
I'll write check for anything. Yeah, all right.
Let me Google that for you.
Can you use that computer thing for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Um, hello, my name is Eliza Vara, and I'm the representative to the school committee for the class of twenty-twenty-one. The sophomore class is very busy. We all can't wait for February break, and it couldn't have come at a better time. Although winter sports are still going on, signups for spring sports closed last week. The sophomore student government is very busy trying to raise enough money for prom. We have thought of many fundraising ideas. The closest event we have planned is the Easter egg hunt for kids that is in one weekend in March. And lastly, most of the class twos are in, which is very exciting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eliza.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, for all of you who don't know me, I'm Campbell Air, the representative of the school committee for the class of twenty-twenty. So in the last few months, the class of twenty-twenty student government has made lots of progress on prom. Although prom, which is set for May tenth, seems like a long way away, as you can imagine, it is coming quite rapidly. Currently, we have booked the DJ, and currently our check for the down payment is being processed. We have booked a photo booth, and we are also preparing to write a check. We have gathered a small group of students who are interested in the prom committee, and we plan to originally meet tomorrow for our first meeting, but that will be pushed back due to the early release. But, um, since it is junior year.
Come on.
Since it is junior year, prom is a huge priority, and we really want the juniors and the seniors to have a memorable experience. On Saturday, lots of students took the ACT here in midfield, and many, including myself, next month will be taking the SAT also here. So it's been a little bit stressful, but we have a lot of things like prom to look forward to. Um, also, I kind of forgot to add this to my notes, but, um, midterms, I personally think were great this year. Although I know there's been a lot of backlash about it, but I thought it was great. So thank you.
Thanks, Campbell.
Campbell, can you tell, tell us a little bit about what the backlash is you've heard about midterms?
Sure. Um, there's been a little bit just from like the people who take mostly honors classes and AP classes, who had a lot of tests kind of crammed in last minute.
Okay.
But, um, I think the stress significantly lower than previous years of midterms.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I definitely keep it personal.
Campbell, I have a question about the prom. Are you doing a sit-down dinner this year for the prom, do you know?
Uh, yeah, so we'd be sit down, but we're thinking we might do.
Because sometimes they don't.
Right. We might be doing, well, we wouldn't be, we might not be served this year, instead do a buffet, just because the quality of food last year was a little bit on the low end, and we know if it's a buffet, it might be a little bit better. Although it might not be as nice, we think that quality, we had a lot of suggestions to improve the quality of food.
Very diplomatic.
It's so political.
So this year, we just kind of wanted to fix that issue, but.
Well done. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks. Maddie, what did you think about the midterms?
Um, I liked it. I thought it was a lot less stressful than, um, previous years.
You weren't bitter that the underclassmen didn't have as many midterms as you did?
I mean, good for them. I don't really care if they have more or less. Some people might be a little upset that we had more, um, like in the previous years, but I thought it was really nice, especially senior year, to be able to like kind of relax more and not be so stressed.
And before you guys go, I just have a couple of questions. So I know a couple of Fridays ago, you guys took the challenge success questionnaire, and I was wondering, um, your thoughts about the questionnaire. I know the results haven't come out yet, but what did you think of the questions? Do you think, um, that change is gonna come about? I mean, what did, what were your overall feelings about the questionnaire?
Um, like really, the whole challenge success is really clever, and I think I really hope it works out around the school, well, in this program, and I think it's gonna happen in later years while, like, we already graduated, but I think it's really clever. And I thought the whole test was really helpful because it opened our eyes to see, like, there's a change that's actually gonna happen, so that was good.
I thought it was definitely helpful, kind of, to hear what we're going through, the stress was, but I do think there was, like, I think it was a little, just be careful a little bit too much, erratic, and all stress. Community terms is great, but, you know, there was a point where you want to challenge something. I think overall, it was kind of good to get that listened to, what kind of stress we're going through this two months.
I agree with them. I, I don't think we've ever done anything like that before, so I think it was good just like to see, like, what changes could happen to the school.
Do some of your teachers give, give you surveys or ask for feedback?
Um, sometimes, yes. Depends on the teacher.
Yeah. Do you, not to that level, you want personal stuff, like his teaching.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's important to get feedback on. I agree. Cool. Now, one other question. Now, is there a, I know student council is more about student engagement and building spirit and community within your classes and whatnot, but is there a venue to go to that when you're having problems or you have suggestions, maybe about, you know, your input on midterms, your input on finals, or various things? Um, is, where do you go to express that?
I do know that technically, we're supposed to have, like, an open forum at student council that anybody can go to. It's, I don't think I've ever seen it in years before, which maybe public settings that could be a good step to hear or voice heard, but, um, maybe there could be better ways to do that, because I think some would be intimidating to come talk in front of people. It might be good to be prepared.
Yeah, okay, just a.
Well, the week before the midterms, a lot of the teachers were asking us, like, how do you feel, and stuff like that, but not really, like, we didn't have a forum or anything. It was more just talking.
Okay.
I think it's, yeah, it's definitely word of mouth, but like, I think that there are people asking you all the time, like, what do you feel about this? Like, I don't know, I feel like we talk a lot about things that are going on, so I think you always have, like, room to put input in, but I get some people, like, wouldn't feel comfortable saying something that they, like, feel, so that is good to have, like, a suggestion box or something. That's always nicer.
Yeah, okay. I just, just a thought, my daughter is at a different school, and, um, you know, they have what's called a student body advisory committee where they have input on midterms and input on rubrics and input on finals, and it's really, you know, we do stuff at high level, and I think you guys are, have a wealth of information to, to help guide us as well. So I just wondered where you guys go to voice.
We definitely take a lot of time during class, like, especially after the midterms. A lot of teachers took time during the class to talk about, like, oh, how were they? Like, did you like it? Did you not like it? Like, the students get to, like, raise their hands and talk about how they felt, and a lot of teachers do that, so.
Awesome, that's good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Have a good break next week.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Up on deck?
You're up.
Middle school science presentation.
Chris thinks he's getting out early.
That's fine. I knew I asked for it.
So we've been hoping to, Jeff and I have been talking and with Orla about, talking about our science curriculum, and also to be very transparent, related to some of our MCAS scores this fall, so looking at kind of a bunch of different things with our science curriculum, from a curriculum standpoint, assessment standpoint, and then also with even transitions between eighth and ninth grade, that's been a very topical conversation, not just about science, but just about in general in school. But, um, so our hope is to flush through several of those items in a comprehensive manner, to talk about programming that we have in place, things that we think are going well, areas that we definitely know that we need to focus in on, and I think that's about it. Anything else, Orla?
No, I think that's about it.
Okay.
So thanks for the opportunity. Um, like I said to Nat and Jeff today, I see my role as the cheerleader, and I feel like my job is to say how marvelous we are, and not discounting that there is certainly room for growth, and I want to tell you about first how marvelous we are, and then the areas that we are identifying where we need to grow.
Yeah, sure, I'll talk about it. So just from a structural standpoint, I'll also say, I really think it's not that common. Talk to our jobalites to have department chairs that span both middle school and high school. Most systems have really department chairs that are solely secondary, in the sense of a high school, nine to twelve. It's rare that we have the structure, I think, of having, like, cluster leaders or team leaders, middle school plus department chairs that span, so that does help a lot in the conversations, and I will say, Orla is very present at the middle school, and really in that sense dives in a lot, so.
Just add to that, there's not many districts that don't have elementary department chairs as well, so.
True.
Fair point.
Yes.
So just from a structural standpoint, clarify, so you know, even this month, I've won the school commitment, one of the parents have, wait, is there science even being taught at the middle school? There is, every day. So we have five days a week, our structure is forty-three minute periods, pretty traditional one through seven, the length of time is something that we've talked about, I know that's something that Dr. Mars talks a lot about as well. And similar length of periods is to high school, on the Monday, Tuesday, Friday. We don't have block scheduling on Wednesdays and Thursdays, so Monday through Friday, students have five periods of science. In seventh and eighth grade, they have an additional period of science a week, every student does. So they have, they meet six times a week, very similar to how in high school I had with bio, had a lab period in that way. Structurally, what it, the way it works is at the cluster model, so I'll use Judy Silva, for example, in seventh grade science. She has her four classes of science, the lab classes are all students on her cluster, but they're not necessarily by the same period class. So if she teaches, just for the sake of explaining, A, B, C, D, science, if she had labs, E period, there would be kids in each class from each of the A, B, C, D. So she's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, she has one lab a week. In seventh grade, it's called science explorations, example of one of the projects that you've had seventh graders go through is the trout in the classroom, which MCP is a big funder to support that, it's great. Eighth grade, when did we switch to introduction to engineering?
I think this is our second year, I feel like, with the approach to engineering, yeah.
That was a, it was an MCP initiative initially, too, is that right? Or is that at the high school level?
It was more a, it was more a high school, actually, initiative, really, insofar as we set up the engineering program in the high school. So therefore, it made sense to reconfigure what was originally called tech eng. And we reconfigured that to segue right into the engineering one. However, MCP funded our, our initial Lego mine stores purchases.
Right.
Yeah, the small pilot that we ran initially. And then our department budget funded the rest.
And I would too, that we would call it, like, when we came up with different names, kind of how to call that lab period, and I would say it was sort of a hodgepodge of different hands-on activities for, for students, and at different times, because it allowed for that, MCP was a great supporter to help kind of do some seed money in that way.
Yeah, they had the drones and the points and, or Dachshund.
Yep.
Another point to, you know, when we were first sort of moving into all of this.
And from a structural standpoint, what's really nice at the middle school is that we do have common planning time built in. So when we can, and it's almost ninety-five percent of the time, we're able to schedule it so that the teachers at each content level, so just specifically think about science, sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade science teachers, their prep period is a common period. So for example, I think eighth grade science is D period this year, all three eighth grade science teachers have the same prep period off every single day. That doesn't mean that it's a mandated meeting period on our end administratively, but they're working constantly together, so if you're down in that wing, they're always kind of working that, that period from the planning period. One period a week is a mandated admin time that they're meeting, so that really is nice on our end administratively, so Orla knows that she can meet weekly with them on that content.
Assuming they're not teaching.
If she's not teaching.
And there is, yeah.
And also, Orla has monthly department meetings, that I would say, at least once, twice a year, you try to do six to twelve meetings as well.
Yeah, once or twice a year, sort of depends on our needs. Well, we always meet together in January, because that's when we actually sit down and look at the basement. So we always get together in January, then it's pets. It depends what's going on. We mentioned earlier this year, when we talked about MCAS and a few things like that.
Do the, do the science frameworks have engineering?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's all on the way. And so we've actually been in a lot of transition, not just us alone, not our science department, the whole state. So we had our original frameworks were from two thousand and six, give or take, two oh four, two oh six frameworks, and, um, as you all know, NGSS, nationwide and all the rest of it, Common Core, all of those played a role, and Massachusetts, Massachusetts, varied their version of NGSS, so now we have the Mas STE two thousand and sixteen frameworks. So we've been rolling it out for about three years, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that. All three grade, what's really different for us right now is, originally, sixth grade was mostly earth science, sort of integrated science, but mostly earth, right? And seventh grade was mostly life science, and eighth grade was mostly physical science. And then our tech piece really only came in, honestly, up until recently, in that tech class, that tech eng class that we had in eighth grade. That's all changed because now we're no longer separating out science process from engineering design process. We're looking at the, the sort of two sides of the same coin, and the engineering practices are implicated right through every strand of middle school science and even high school science. Desi recommended that you go to the integrated model. Not every school in the state did, we did. They put a fair, you know, they had a fairly strong position paper and gave, you know, what I consider to be a really strong argument for it, so we went for that integrated model. Some school systems have stayed with the layer cake, in other words, where you're separating out the life science from the physical science and so on. So right now, what's happening is, we're going, we're teaching LS is life science, PS is physical science, ESS is earth and space science, and then ET is engineering technology. So everybody teaches that, which is a fairly significant shift if you've spent thirty years teaching, I don't know if you spent thirty, but let's say thirty years teaching your life science or twenty years teaching your physical science, and that's what you went to college for, et cetera, et cetera. So it's been, you know, a fairly significant shift, shift for us. So this June, or May, rather, in two thousand and nineteen, we will have, for the first time, we will have our MCAS based on the new frameworks, the two thousand and sixteen frameworks. Last year, it was sort of, I'm calling it was legacy-ish, but it was next gen-ish, as in it was overlapping standards between the two. So next year will be the twenty, will be the two thousand and sixteen frameworks. Now, as a result, we've been rolling it out for three years, per Desi recommendation, honestly, because it made more sense to do this, start in sixth, roll it up to seventh, roll it up to eighth, so you had the same cohort of students interacting with the new frameworks in sort of a fairly sequential manner. Not to say there weren't a few gaps along the way last year, there were a couple, there were certainly a couple of things that, you know, didn't exactly work out according to plan, but this year, I think we should be in pretty good shape.
Sorry, Orla?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, of course.
So how did the teachers cope with, because that seems like a huge, as you say, thirty years doing a curriculum?
Well, in each, in each grade level, when they were rolling out the new standards, we provided them with, I gotta say, four embedded days during that year. They also had summer R and D, not in every instance, but if they wanted it, there was summer R and D time available.
Yeah, and I'll say from a district perspective, you know, like, Dr. Mars, it was a priority on the summer R and D piece from a district lens, knowing that this was a big significant cult, um, curriculum change in that way to make it work. Now, summer R and D sometimes works well, sometimes not, it does depend on teacher's schedules, but that was where the four kind of embedded or in-house professional development days that you were working with them to.
I worked with them.
And all of them were required to do it?
Yes, yeah. And I worked with them a fair bit along the way. We also got a couple of the physics teachers to come over at one point, to go over to Lake, rather, and sit with them, because that is not my strength, to put it mildly, and there's no point me pretending I know it because I don't. And so I know Mike Cowell came over and he worked with them, and I feel like Phil worked with them for the engineering and stuff. So we did a little bit of that, and honestly, they worked really hard. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. They've worked insanely hard for the last few years. You know, you're designing curriculum from scratch.
Right.
Everyone else in Massachusetts, in fairness, is pretty much doing the same thing because there were no resources when we started. That's why some school systems stayed with the old layer-caked approach. There were limited resources. McGraw-Hill was actually very good to us insofar as they gave us some great deals on textbooks, but they also gave us some training. It varied in, you know, how effective it was, but it was training, it was helpful to some degree. So it's been a good, good steep learning curve, and, you know, kudos to the teachers, they worked incredibly hard with this. Now, the high school, and I know this is really about the high school, but just to give you a sense, we actually worked backwards in the high school, because again, that made sense. Eleventh grade chemistry switched last year, tenth grade physics is switching this year, ninth grade biology will switch next year, because Desi recommended that you don't switch your MCAS subject until the year they're going to be ready to test it, and by all accounts, they will be ready to test it by June two thousand and twenty. This year, we're going to be tested on overlapping standards, and then we have two days of MCAS in June for biology, and then the day after, all the ninth graders get the joy of participating in a pilot online. I know, just what they want, a third day of biology MCAS, well, there you go. And this is what Desi is saying we have to do, so therefore, that's what we're going to do. But in any case, so each grade level has a theme now, sixth grade structure, and actually, that's K through eight. I just don't happen to know the other ones off my heart, but I think I linked it, oh yeah, I linked it right there, the K through eight. So you guys, I'll share this with you guys afterwards, and because there's tons of links to, and there's all sorts of student projects, if you want to look at them. But you'd be here at midnight if we went through all of us.
Might be, anyway.
Yeah. I've never been known.
Slide three.
Shortness.
Don't count the total number yet.
Okay, I'll speed it up. Anyway, I don't mean, don't ask me any more questions.
This will be the last time he invites us.
So sixth grade is structure and function, seventh is systems and cycles, and eighth is cause and effect, which doesn't seem like anything much, but it really does shift your focus, because everything you do in sixth grade has to come under sort of that umbrella of how structure affects function, and similarly, in eighth grade, system cycles and so on. What's a big shift as well in terms of eighth grade, when you're talking about cause and effect, they're going to be teaching genetics and evolution in eighth grade, which is quite different, but it's a great place to see cause and effect, so it works out very, very nicely.
Yeah, well, I also will say, as Orla said, like, some of the teachers, you know, they were specialized in thinking, like, there was a piece about, like, yikes, I really wanted to teach seventh grade because it was life science, so I was also using within the school, our school, like, Orla said about Mike and Phil coming over to help with physics, within the school, there were life science experts, physical science kind of work with each other too. So what is, I would say, one of the things about our building the fact for seventh and eighth grade science, because this was the high school, it's a science wing, the seventh and eighth grade interactions are pretty high in that way, like, they see each other a lot, whereas that's one of the, sometimes we say it's a downside because they're not clustered in that way, but that does allow for that collaboration. I'll just say, like, kind of, and I use the term struggle affectionately, one of the challenges that we have is that we do have heterogenous grouping, which I know is the right thing for middle school kids, but it is differentiated lesson, you have kids of all abilities in your class from a wide range, with that middle school, I know it's right age appropriately, but that does present some challenges with the content and the wide differentiation, so that's just one of the things that we have in place. Also, that idea of balance between standardized testing, test prep, and doing science, I mean, it's just a reality that we have. I don't think it's a surprise to you, my feelings about standardized testing and that being the best assessment. That said, it is an assessment. I mean, but that's one thing that we've been talking a lot about, we'll get to that, about prepping kids for standardized testing. I mean, we don't want to stop everything, because I, a lot of our jobalite colleagues, they literally stop February vacation up until, and they, they call it MCAS prep, MCAS homework. I'm very mindful of language and what that means. I always say that we should be doing MCAS prep all year long, because it's a reflection of the standards. That said, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but just to kind of mention it, you know, last year was the first time kids took assessments on Chromebooks. We need to make sure that we are showing kids how to take an assessment on a Chromebook. And a good analogy is thinking about, you wouldn't have the student take their driver's test on a car they've never driven. They've never, if they've never driven a standard, you don't want to give them on that, or a pickup truck if they usually drive, you know, a sedan. So that idea, and I don't see that as teaching the test, it's just kind of responsible use in that way, so being mindful of that is, that's the way about just environment, you wouldn't, you want to make sure that they're comfortable in that environment, because I think there was some pieces in that way, too. And so I think that's something to make sure, because kids, we often have found, kids write shorter answers on a Chromebook or on a tablet or a device than they do handwritten. And I think as adults, that's often the opposite, but kids, I think they just kind of shortchange it and do that. So that's something that I think we're working on. Again, that's, that's, yeah, is that prepping for the test, maybe, but it's also, we want to make sure it's a reflection of what they know. And I think we'll talk about that with the ultimate response answers and trends that we found without as well.
And so keep in mind, too, the standards that we're, that we're working off now, the two thousand and sixteen, these were created by Desi with these learning times, time on learning in mind. Sixth grade falls a little short of our recommended four to five hours, they have approximately three hours and thirty-five minutes. Seventh and eighth grade actually fall right in the four to five hour recommendation with four hours and twenty minutes, and then high school science, I just threw it in there, just because we know how difficult biology is. They actually have about three hours and forty minutes weekly, whereas the recommendation is five hours. And so just so you have a sense, that's what Desi wrote these frameworks. Now, I don't know that other school systems, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying other I'm not saying other school systems are doing five hours a week in science at high school. I don't know necessarily. I mean, I have some data and stuff here and there, but I'm just giving you guys a sense of what Desi recommends.
So Orla, is that, that three hours and forty minutes at the high school, is that a structural issue with the schedule, with the school day? Like, you know, what drives that?
Good question, above my pay grade. But, well, I mean, it's the three periods, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and your block period, you know. I mean, you don't see them, we'll say, on Wednesday or Thursday. It's, in my opinion, we have a short school day. I would work another half an hour easily on the day. I think it would be great for kids. More time, longer lunch, more time on learning. Sorry, Maddie. I think it's a win-win.
She's out, she doesn't care.
She said, "Good for them."
So I wanted to focus too, a little bit on iPads, just because the iPad Pilot started in the Starz cluster, I don't remember which cluster, with Jason Spearhead, you know, with Jason Heim. And that was seven years ago. And just sort of to give you some perspective of the way we've changed how we use them. Initially, you know, it was all about digitizing your worksheets and digitizing everything you did. And it was very base level, but you know, it was the first step, I suppose. Whereas now, we're using iPads, you know, to demonstrate the learning. By, I mean, the kids create all, you'll see slides in a minute, all sorts of stuff. They have documentaries, they have all filming as they're making models, they're demonstrating balancing equations. One little kitty has like Play-Doh and some little horse, little Lego horsey coming through. It's hilarious. However, it's very effective, because they really are demonstrating their learning and they're using this device to do it, and they're doing it. You know, they're engaged in it and they're showing you, yeah, actually, I do understand it. Not, I'm randomly picking out C out of my choice of A, B, C, D kind of thing. So, oh yeah, that's an Alice Keeler quote that Jason added in here. "A Chromebook or an iPad will not make a sucky worksheet awesome. In fact, it just makes it, I'll go with worse." How about that? Really not a fan of that word. But also, I wanted to make the point, and Jason and I talked about this, that iPads aren't computers, and they really shift, I mean, at least from what I've seen, looking in, because I've never had an iPad in my classroom. But from seeing it in six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, they really shift how you go about teaching. And I actually think for the better. I think they came along just the same time that we were seeing this shift in the frameworks and, you know, how we're approaching teaching and learning insofar as it's not what you know anymore, it's what you can do. And it's what you can do with what you know, and using iPads allows kids sort of another vehicle to demonstrate that, that it's not just doing a lab in the science class, it's building models, which is a huge part of our frameworks now, being able to build a model to demonstrate what you know and what you can do with it. Yeah, so I'm not going to waste, not waste, I'm not going to take the time to go through all of these slides, but you guys can take as much time as you want in your leisure to look at, these are just examples of student work. The standards are on top, and then we've sort of illustrated the type of work that they were doing, you know, to actually achieve the standard. So in one instance there, for example, you see kids are comparing densities, floating and sinking. So they had a variety of objects, they had to layer them. On the other side, you see a C E R writing, that's claim evidence and reasoning, writing to illustrate how they understand this standard and whether they can actually explain about densities. Here, you're going to see a bunch of videos, I'm not going to play them. But again, it's sixth grade, a bunch of different things. So they created a video, here they're showing, using Legos to show endo- and exothermic reactions. Over here, although you can't see it very well, they were measuring release of energy, you know, using hot and cold packs and things like that. Here, you're seventh grade electricity and magnetism. Oops, clearly something happened there with that video, I need to, need permission. But what you're seeing here is that seventh grade students were interacting with the content through a whole variety of mechanisms. There was a station rotation where they looked at magnets, looked at properties of magnets, they looked at electricity, forces, and so on. So they had this whole station rotation going on for several days in their classes. Same thing again here, potential and kinetic energy. That's actually an area of focus for us, because that was an area which we did not perform very well last year. Potential and kinetic energy stood out for whatever reason, along with a couple of life science standards. Heat energy, you're getting the same idea here, more seventh grade. This is really neat. Not only is Desi asking that kids, you know, be able to manipulate data, they also want you to be able to apply value to something else that you're seeing. So in this instance, the kids had to use what we call a decision matrix and evaluate other students' projects essentially. With solar cars, and it was, oh, the bridges, and the bridge creation. So they had to go through this whole decision matrix and look at the pros and cons, the strengths and weaknesses and so on, of their own and other students' projects. This is matter interaction, so this is eighth grade. You see they had electrolysis of water lab. Typically, when you get into the sort of chemistry part of eighth grade, that's where you're seeing more of your typical chemistry-type labs. That's one of the things that we're lucky about in Lake, because it was a high school. They can do that, because they have the setup for those kinds of labs. They have the facilities there, which does help. Oh yeah, this is really neat, especially the one on the right, they're explaining number of atoms and so on. Okay, but in any case, you can look at all that. I know I'm going on and on and on, sorry, I'm trying to pay attention to the time. So this slide I put in purposely, because there's a ton of links to different Desi information in terms of the transition, in terms of the new design of the test. I have it in a couple of other slides as well. And you'll notice at the bottom, I struck out something. I did that purposely today, because the commissioner has sort of withdrawn his original statements where he said he was going to phase out, or Desi was going to phase out chemistry and tech eng as an MCAS subject, or as an, you know, as an actual assessment. But it appears now he is not necessarily saying that yet. So he has withdrawn that for the moment.
Well, let's make sure what Jeff and the three of us talked about, because about the percentage of schools that pick bio versus physics.
So about seventy percent of the schools in the state do the bio MCAS, about twenty-five percent do physics, and then that other five percent was your chemistry and your tech eng. So I can't imagine it was terribly cost-effective, but presumably, there was some pushback and he stepped back from the original statement that he was not going, or that we weren't going to continue with it.
High school students need to pass just one, one science.
Just one science MCAS, yeah. We do biology in ninth grade, which, like I said, is seventy percent of the state does biology.
Structurally, that, I mean, what I was, we were saying today, that people wonder, well, could we do bio later year from a practicality? You want to give as much max time for kids, if they do not pass, give them time to graduate. So I think that's the piece to make sure that they pass that test. I mean, it is the tail wagging the dog, but that's a reality of that, making sure that we give as many options as we can for kids to succeed.
And you also don't want to have it as a sophomore test when they already have their math and their English.
Well, that's interesting.
I mean, there is a test fatigue kind of piece to this too.
Yeah, because a lot of high schools don't have bio freshman year, right?
A lot do. But a lot also have physics.
That's their MCAS subject.
Most do.
Yeah, so it varies by school, but I mean, I think the rationale, and this was before my day in this role, but I think the rationale was the test fatigue piece because of the English and math. Because that's what we see in eighth grade.
Fifth and eighth grade, that's the same thing, they have science, math, and English.
Science, math, and English, it is a lot.
It used to be three days of testing per subject. So that was not, that's a lot, when you really think about that from just, now it's two, which is still a lot, but you do see that impact and just wonder in that way. Again, hardly, hard to know, but it's a reality.
Yeah, so new design, as I said, which I could show you in subsequent slides, or you can click on that if you want at some point. But it's an even distribution between life, earth, physical, and the tech eng. And I've already said about the high school one, we're still paper-based for biology. We're the last holdout. Twenty nineteen is still paper-based for biology, and then that's it. There'll be no more MCAS that are paper-based. Everything is CBT at that point. So they're going, sort of interesting. We have eight engineering practices in the, well, actually, for all, for K through eight, science. There is eight engineering practices, but they've sort of bundled them, and they're not necessarily going to report out on them individually. You'll get a sort of a collective kind of reporting, is what they're saying right now in terms of those practices. And it'll be very interesting to see what it looks like next year when they develop this new report card. But it's a pretty even distribution in terms of how they've been bundled. The questions have changed fairly significantly. This thing that they're calling a module, I would call a reading comprehension, you know, ACT-ish looking insofar as you're reading a paragraph, there may be a data table, maybe a graph, and then they're going to have a couple of multiple choice on it, and then they're going to have what they call a constructed response, which is the new name for an open response. But basically, it's an open response question. But for the most part, it'll be doing something with the data that they've given you. My guess is, and from what I've heard from the couple of workshops I've gone to, is it won't be that you really have to know anything. All the data will be there, everything you need will be sort of, you know, built into that question. The question is, do you understand what you're reading? And can you actually do something with that information? So they're going to be challenging, certainly challenging questions for eighth graders. I mean, I think they'll be challenging, and fifth graders, I think they'll be challenging for ninth graders. And then, of course, your typical multiple choice questions, although there are going to be two pointers as well as one pointers for the multiple choice. And the two pointers, what's going to be interesting, is that if you don't get part one right, then part two is automatically incorrect, is what they're saying. I mean, I don't know how this will all play out, because they haven't done it yet, so we'll see when the time comes. And of course, then you still will have your typical open response there at the edge, your typical three-point open response that will be hand-scored as well. This is really just going through the same thing. Yes, 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 okay. So I put a bunch of links in here, practice test. What's very interesting is, yes, there is a practice test with twenty-three questions. So it's a little bit of a euphemism when they say they have practice tests. So there's twenty-three questions that we can currently use. Oh yeah, so this is, I don't know if that's the right one. Is it? I think that's just going through all the different, all the different sort of types of questions that they have.
Yeah, it is.
It's going to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, not that one, sorry. That one's just not as, it's the one above us, I don't know where you were.
I'm in the house by standard.
Yeah, that's the only one, sorry. I should have started.
That's the one.
Yeah, this is the one. So if you look at an item analysis, but this will show you.
The last one.
No, sorry, I should have started, I'm sorry. When we get there, you'll see that they don't actually release every question. They release about half of them. So you can see that they released, for example, two open responses, and they released about half of the multiple choice from last year's. There was a time when they released them all, they've changed that. Presumably, they're holding on to the questions to use in subsequent years. I hope they release a fair batch of questions next year, because it'll be the new format and everything else, but I'm not entirely sure if they will. So.
So that does present a real challenge, because we're thinking about, trying to figure out where we missed, or where our students missed. From a curriculum standpoint, from a student standpoint, they gave us the standard, but that really doesn't tell you that much. So it's, that is a very hard, it's a frustrating thing, I think, every year on the conference call, you hear the superintendent across the state, say the commissioner, I mean, this just isn't good practice for that piece. So I just, you know, would ask, anytime the school committee, you know, the state school committee things, to continue to convey that, it's a very hard thing as educators to really help and really see, because we clearly have areas to improve. But how do we know what that is really kind of drilled down to see? Because that's just a hard thing. You know you got it wrong, but we don't know what the question was.
It's a lot cheaper for Desi. It's a lot cheaper for them, so they don't have to develop as many questions.
Of course, much cheaper, yeah.
Do we practice any other type of benchmark assessments internally to measure the skills of our students against the standards?
Yes and no. I mean, we have common assessments across the board in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science. But since we are still in the rollout phase, I have to be honest, I don't think we've done a huge amount of work with that. Now, that's not to say that the teachers aren't meeting all the time and comparing their scores, you know, and so calibrating, we'll say, on that level. So it's three sixth grade science teachers meeting together, the three seventh grade, and so on. So there would be that degree of.
Yeah, and I think from a longitudinal piece, I mean, a couple of things. One is, we do have common assessments, we can't say that we don't adjust them each year. So that's a thing from, trying to improve, so that's a hard thing you do. But also, because we're in this transition, we only have really one year set of data. To know it's from a benchmark thing, I think when we get to Study Island, that's going to also be a mechanism that's going to help us in that way.
Yes, yeah. Actually, don't, yeah, no, you're fine, for a sec. You'll see there that it says the digital library of released questions. I believe that's where we'll see, but you don't need to bother that. And above it, the scoring key and correct. What's really interesting, when they release the information for the open response, you can see what a four, a three, a two, a one, and a zero mean. And you can actually see student samples of it. So that's really, really helpful for the open responses that they release it for. And that's usually two out of the four. For the other two, you just have to guess, hmm, what did they not know about potential and kinetic energy? You know, but you don't know for sure.
From a rubber-hits-the-road practice, that's a really good thing to show students too. For exemplars, and I remember doing that sixth grade math, just to show, like, it means the art of test-taking too. I mean, which is something, again, test prep, but to kind of say, share what you know, don't leave a blank. I mean, it's all those practices that we remember from childhood, but I always said in math, it's question on probability, use the word likely in an answer, use the word random. I mean, share some vocabulary that you know, but also showing students the difference between how they scored a one versus a two, a two to a three, a three to a four. So kind of looking at progressively, as you show, show more information that you know. And that it's better to do that, because I think some of our students also will say, I'm not sure, and they just leave it. And so that's a piece that we want to make sure, and it's that balance of saying, this is important, but also don't stress. I mean, that's a hard thing, and it feels like mixed messages.
So speaking of blank, that segues very nicely into our four open responses from last year. The two that are underlying, twenty-one and forty-two, they're the two that they actually released the questions and where we can see student responses. So what you'll notice there is, I have recorded fairly high percentages of students who I'm going with left those questions blank, because I have a tough time thinking they scored zero on them. Why they left them blank? I'm not an eighth grader, I don't know. I could give you a list this long of what I think are reasonable, you know, reasons why they might have, but I don't know what I don't know. But I'll show you some other data in a second, that'll run it back for five years. But thirty-seven percent left number twenty blank, forty-six percent left number twenty-one blank. Then only one percent left the tech eng one blank, which is fantastic. And then thirty-three percent left number forty-two blank. And like I said, I'm choosing to say that it was blank. All I know is it was a score of zero. But I'm interpreting that in a very, well, I don't know, in a positive manner, but maybe a slightly better manner than expecting that they actually couldn't attempt the question or wrote so poorly that they got zero. Although, I have to say, when I was looking at the two questions that they released and I looked at what they scored as a zero, I think I would have been gentler and probably given them a one for it when I looked at it, because they made some, you know, concrete statements that validated the information that they were given. But I'm not a scorer. So I'm going to skip this one, just because I think you'll see it a little better here, okay? So the percentage of students leaving open response questions blank, I ran it back for the last five years. So under your tech eng, you can see it was always low numbers. Earth science, well, if you go from twenty thirteen, if we work our way up, it went from zero up to thirty-seven percent last year. Physical science from seven up to forty-six percent, and life science from eleven up to thirty-three percent. But you can clearly see that last year was different from any of the previous years. I mean, those numbers of kids either scoring zeros or leaving them blank was really, really high last year. Was their first year in the Chromebook, I don't know.
Was that also, was this Park or Measured Progress last year?
This was Measured Progress.
That was the swap, that was the major swap. It wasn't just, so it was also the first year of Chromebooks and the first year we went from Park to Measured Progress?
Yeah, but the two, those testing framework, I would say, are pretty similar in structure. I mean, those ideas are going to be seen on, you know, a pig dressed in lipstick is still a pig. And it's like, I mean, going to the next-gen MCAS in Park were very similar. I think the bigger shift for us was going from like the legacy to Parkish. Park and next-gen are pretty similar in that structure. I think, I mean, the reality too is, this is something we've looked at, is I don't think we have been as consistent with writing in science by sixth grade. But that was sort of like our gut interpretation, obviously. We've got those, whatever I'm saying, that like Jeff and I talked in August, saying, that's something to really look at, like programmatically, Chromebooks aside, are we writing enough in science?
But that's the one variable that changed.
Yeah.
I mean, you look at those numbers, the digital.
That's the one variable that changed.
I'm just going to pull this over here.
Chromebook.
So similarly, I tracked the number of students scoring, oh, sorry.
I'm just saying, the typing piece, you know, that's got to be a contributor to that.
Yeah, we saw fifteen percent across the board difference between written. And in the same year, we did half of our middle schools in electronic, and half of them paper. And there was fifteen percent across the board difference.
Really? Okay, so that's, that's interesting.
And I want to be clear too, that's how I'm interpreting from a. I'm just being sensitive, like, like, to be honest, it's not from like a connectivity piece. It's really more the mechanism of the testing, which I think is that something that we've really did talk about is structuring that, making sure that it won't be the first time our students are taking an assessment on a Chromebook in science.
Exactly.
And I mean, how are we doing that in that way to make sure?
Well, these were macabre.
And that's not just a fantasy of everything by any means. But really, yeah, the curriculum is the driving piece and we want to make sure.
And so at the same time, I tracked the number of students scoring fours. So you can see, it's hard to see a trend, you know, in each of the, in each of the strands. So in your tech engine, your earth science and all the rest of it. Again, it's up and down. It seems to be random. And really, apart from last year, when we talk about leaving them blank, it's the same thing. It's up and down. It appears to be quite random in terms of which particular strand is the strand where more kids are going to either score the zero or get the blank over the last five years. So our plan, okay, so the plan going forward is, well, obviously, we're going to complete the rollout of the twenty sixteen STE. We're definitely going to do a practice. I actually talked with Kelly about it today. And I'm going to talk with the, with the science teachers. We'll try and grab the Chromebook cards on a day when they're not being used for any infrastructure stuff or actual testing. And we'll get them into the science classrooms to give them an opportunity to actually use that practice test that Desi, the twenty-three questions or whatever it is, to have them go through it on a Chromebook and sort of simulate the day kind of thing. We've also purchased Study Island, which is, I will show you in a second. But what it's allowing us to do is it's allowing the students to review and to, so to review sixth and seventh grade, if you're an eighth grade student, and to also practice what you're learning. And practice it in a way that is very similar to the types of questions, these dropdown menus, these organizing things in sequence, all the variety of new test questions, the new sort of structure of questions that they really would not be familiar with. I mean, a little bit in English, a little bit of math, but it's certainly a little bit different too in terms of how these, just the mechanics of going to my dropdown menu or dropping and dragging different things. It's just a little different from, you know, writing with your pencil kind of thing. So Study Island is allowing us to do that. And I'll talk more about that in a second and a couple of slides. We're definitely increasing our focus on writing. Ironically enough, we had started talking about this last year and the year before because of the change in the frameworks. Clearly, there is a greater emphasis on making your claim, identifying your evidence, and then showing how your evidence supports that claim. Because once again, it's not what you know. It's what you can do is what you know. And so connecting the dots in this is illustrating, you know, what you can do. And we're definitely encouraging sort of more informal opportunities to write in class. You know, kids come in, do an opener, write down their thoughts, share their thoughts. They do a lot of writing anyway, but we're really going to try and sort of make that focus less about writing a formal lab report and more about writing, you know, your CER or, you know, jotting down your thoughts about whatever it is. Period Ed, we've definitely, we've definitely included science and English in the annual workshop and that, and Susan always did. So science jumped in this year. I think this was English the second year, was it?
Nope.
Or their first year too? Okay, okay. And we're also going to continue to examine homework practices and assessments. That link I put in there was, actually shows the homework assigned over two, two-week periods in Blake Science and one two-week period in high school science. Back in November, after we'd instituted the homework policy, I had a brainwave, I guess, and decided we should collect homework and just have a look and see where we're at. And, you know, see, could we see any discrepancies in terms of, you know, vertically and horizontally? So from both perspectives. And you could click on it at some point yourself. I'm happy to report that there really weren't in Blake Science. On first look, you might think, oh, this teacher seems to give a lot of homework. And oh, this teacher doesn't seem to give any. When you actually read it, you'll realize that it's the same. It's just how they recorded it in the spreadsheet, that it's pretty much the same. So we're giving weekly homework with Study Island. And then for the most part, most of the other homework in sixth, seventh, and eighth is, you know, finishing up something from class or getting ready for some kind of an assessment kind of things. And maybe doing something in kind of a reflection for their digital portfolios or some such thing. So here's Study Island. I'm not going to go into it, but there is a link down there if you want to look at it yourself. But bottom line is, actually, I think I'll go on and, yeah. So this gives you a nice little sense here. If you look over here to the side, what it's going to show you is it's completely aligned to the Massachusetts standards. So I don't know if they do this for every state. And I know they're aligned to Next Gen, but they're also aligned to Massachusetts. And I suppose if there's other states that don't use Next Gen, presumably, it's worth their while to do this. So there's all sorts of different kind of, you know, kids can play games. They can go through a lesson. They can do, like I said, mix and matching. There's sort of flashcardy little things. But there's, what's really, really nice is there are these practice questions that are absolutely in line with the kind of questions that they're going to see in MCAS. So here, they would just have to select one. Here, they have to sequence these. And then over here, oh, yeah, there were dropdowns. There's a couple of little dropdowns. So it gives them practice actually using a similar format. And I have to say, the caliber is outstanding. Not a big fan of buying programs. It's not something I've ever typically done. But when we looked at this, we realized how strong it was and how very appropriate it was for what we're trying to do. And it's so well-aligned and it's just. This is a weekly homework assignment in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science.
Do teachers get reports?
Excuse me?
The teachers get reports to make sure they're doing it properly?
They do. They get a progress report. So I get a weekly report in terms of usage, being the admin on it.
Do you get a report as well?
Yes, I get the weekly report. And all I can tell you is there's lots of sixth and seventh and eighth graders using Study Island. It's quite, you can see the usage patterns. So this is a progress report that Jason just did a screenshot of for me. And you see all these little yellows. It's like an award with a little blue ribbon. I can't see it very well from here. But the point is, if you look across, say, if look at this sort of horizontally, that's each student. We took off the names, obviously. But what you could see is the number of students reaching the sort of blue ribbon level most often in their first attempt. What's really nice about Study Island is if they don't, then it actually creates additional questions for them. There's pros and cons to that. For most of our students, that's a pro. For some of our students, that can be a little demoralizing in some instances. So we have to be mindful of how we're sort of parsing that out with different students. We actually upped the ante in terms of what the blue ribbon means. Study Island has their default set at seventy percent. We put it up to eighty percent. And so eighty percent of the questions being correct. So eight out of your ten questions that you were assigned or some such. But yeah, I get weekly progress reports then in terms of usage and so on. I don't get this. I'm sure I could get this, but I, you know, the teachers themselves get this because they know the students. So in terms of increasing our focus on writing, we had created, we actually had created, starting last summer and then into this year, both the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade template that build upon each other. So in terms of these scaffolds and supports that we offer to students or that we provide students so that they can write, you know, their claim and find their evidence and make the connection between them. So it might be sentence starters, we'll say, in sixth grade. And then in seventh grade, it might be just more reminders, you know. And in eighth grade, then even less. So there's a whole, there's a whole template there with all those scaffolds right in there for them. And then, of course, you know, no good presentation with Mr. Vaughn would be, would not have a whole pile of resources attached. Actually, they're really good.
Game quotes.
I reminded my son today.
Me quote.
Oh, no, there were no quotes, actually. Shocking. Oh, no, no, we have a slide with a quote. Hang on, there is one.
Thank God.
But there's some really good resources here.
Some sarcasm.
It's affectionate sarcasm.
What was actually great about this is because when I looked at this again, I went, oh, yeah. And I, I actually took a few minutes today to go through some of these resources. And then I pulled a whole pile of them and sent them to two of our physics teachers at the high school because this is actually one of their goals this year, to create some CERs for their students. So we are bridging the gap, we'll say, between the middle school and the high school. And that's the plan to, you know, introduce this as a writing style in the science classrooms at the high school. And then here's your quote. What is it? "I dreamed I was being chased by a giant standardized test," I believe, but it's not me. Yeah. Oh, and just one thing I threw in there out of interest too is I went back into Drive recently and pulled out all sorts of documents from all sorts of places and created my, created sort of our little history of our, let's say, curriculum review that we've undergone both back in, we'll say, you know, oh, eight, oh, nine, oh, ten, twenty-twelve, twenty-fifteen, and you'll see. So you can see the progression of what we've been doing over the number of years. Right now, like I said, we're in a big transition phase. We have curriculum maps for eleventh grade and tenth grade, because that makes sense. We will write ninth grade in advance of rolling out the frameworks. At the middle school, I've done it the other way. Because of the very significant change in curriculum and who was teaching what, you can't create a curriculum map if you don't know, if you don't know what's going to be in it and if you haven't interacted with the materials. So it was very easy for high school teachers, or is very easy for high school teachers to rewrite a curriculum map reflecting the new frameworks because they're still teaching biology. You're still teaching chemistry. Whereas for middle school teachers, we reversed it and now we're actually starting to write them. So sixth grade is writing it this year. And then seventh grade will write it either next summer or next year, depending upon some of our R and D allocations. And I think that's about it for me.
That's just chapter one.
Sorry. So do you have any questions, Mars?
I guess for both of you, but when you talk about forty-three minute periods, I mean, is that really consistent with what you want to be doing for a middle school model? Or what would you do differently? How would you structure it differently?
So, I mean.
To me, forty-three minutes doesn't, doesn't strike me as a middle school model.
No, and I mean, because the reality too, that's on paper. You have the forty-three, maybe it's forty-four, forty-five. Reality from instructional standpoint, you're talking about a thirty-nine minute period. I mean, like truly about just breathing, coming in and leaving and seemingly so. Personally, and we've talked about this a little bit, putting aside the idea of like shared scheduling, I would love the idea of like six period day, where you have more like a fifty-five minute period.
Right.
You know, it's actually, I think that's better. I think that allows. Years ago, we piloted something with the high school that taught, it was a very complex schedule. So it was a little like a four-day rotation where we had, we did have sixty-minute periods, but then we had a middle block period up to eighty-eight minutes. That's long. Very long for a middle school. I think fifty-five to sixty is like the sweet spot because then you're talking about like a fifty-minute real instruction. I think that allows time to things, I think also from, not just from the science setup, but like art class. And we have teachers like Nancy Devon, she teaches sixth, seventh, eighth grade art and that. That's a lot of setup, put-down, PE, wellness, a lot of activities. When you're talking about what we believe is right, I think, you know, for middle school, but also, also, all kids, I mean, I always go back, like, looking at how the kindergarten, first grades, they set up their classroom. That's what all education should look like.
So what are the impediments to getting us towards that kind of schedule?
Shared staff, I think, is a big piece. I mean, the reality of a budgetary standpoint, because those are the drivers. When we talk about the master schedule, that's where we start, is kind of thinking, all right, we have these pieces, whether it's wellness, world language, sometimes it can be an academic class. And so I think that's a real driver. The trade-off on that that we often talk about is we could say, you know, you're not shared, but then we're getting into people's full-time equivalent status. You know, so I think that's a push and pull up. Sometimes we get that piece from teachers saying, I wish I was only here. Okay, but then you'd be part-time. So I think that's a big, that's honestly, I think, the biggest driver. I think from a PD standpoint, I don't think our teachers would need much structural change. It's not like we're going from a forty-five to a ninety.
Right.
I think they would adapt quite nicely. I think that's the biggest driver.
Yeah, transportation's not an issue, so that's.
Right, I mean, I think that's.
So you'd have, you'd have bigger headcount with same number of FTE. You could do it with same number of FTEs, but you'd have, we'd have a bigger headcount. Is that what you're seeing?
I think, yeah, I mean, so the number of shared staff we have is very small.
Okay.
It's just that when they do, I mean, years ago, I remember when we first started doing Mandarin, more Baccarat. One section down here, the entire master schedule rotated around per one period. Because, I mean, seriously, that's the reality of how things work. So we don't have, I think it's on one hand, I can count, and it may only be two periods a day. At most, or one. But when they are, it does inhibit because it allows it. What's hard too, not just from a day, I mean, from a day to day, but when we do things like an assembly of a school, even for tomorrow, I mean, we were joking via text, you know, the one-hour shift. We want to make sure we're aligning how we do it with the high school. And then if we have an IP meeting, a five oh four meeting and that, because that can inhibit. I would say another, this is separate from that question, Chris, but brought up about, I think, Emily, you had asked about how the teachers adjust with professional learning piece. There's a balance that we have about professional development during the year, but also teaching structural time with kids. I mean, like, I'll say that our staff dives in on professional development, but every time we do that, we're taking them out of the classroom with kids, which we know has the greatest impact.
Right.
And that's a balance. And I think also our teachers, you know, there are a few of them have been real spears for our district, like real spearheads in the initiatives, asking to present at conferences. Every time that one of our teachers is doing that, it's a trade-off.
Yeah.
So I think that's the thing that we want to balance, is making sure that we're on a sort of cold, cutting edge, making sure we're on that piece and collaborating, but every time again, that's, that's sort of that trade-off that we want to make sure we keep in mind. I mean, Diane Horvath was talking about the opportunity for the Digital Girls have been on Microsoft this year. She posted, she said, honestly, I would love them, but they've missed a lot of time.
Right.
You know, so I think that's that piece that we want to make sure we're kind of weighing. But I, I would say, I mean, Jeff, am I missing anything?
No, I mean, I was thinking to in terms of job embedded, we've, we've scaled way back.
Yeah, we have.
You know, that was.
So it sounds like the schedule sounds somewhat, you could revisit that idea. I mean, at least scenario-wise, right?
The cost of the district would be the same, other than benefits, depending on whether the people, people move from full-time to part-time, whether they kept benefits or not. You may have incremental shifts to the town and benefits.
If you couldn't sync it, that's, so that's my question is, how close can you sync those schedules identically?
It's one of the things the SEL is looking at, right? One of the, so there's a real study kind of on this in the SEL test, which I'm not on that.
Yes.
They are.
Yeah, so they're.
They're fully synced right now, but that's part of the problem is, I mean, we're tied to that piece.
Oh, so they're forty-three, the same.
Yeah. Monday, Tuesday, Friday, they are. What happens on Wednesday, Thursday, they're two, they're blocks equate to two of our periods.
They're modified block.
It's kind of crazy algorithm how it works that way. But so they are, and I would say, I don't know. I mean, like, we could open up a huge can of worms like wondering, but from a high school teacher, I think I've heard a lot of them say, I don't know what it would look like, but they would like longer periods. I mean, sure.
Well, I guess it's, it's really just running a scenario and the scheduling program and a separate scenario with the load, you know, so I've done it a few times myself, so it's.
We have shared staff at elementary too.
Yeah.
I mean, like, I think the, one of the biggest differences we have right now that's challenging is someone, if there's an individual that teaches at elementary and the secondary, that's what makes it really hard. From also a part-time scheduling standpoint too, because Wednesdays and Thursdays, we rotate the order of periods. So the middle school and high school does, elementary doesn't. So you cannot be a shared staff member, teach both at the middle school and elementary on Wednesday or Thursday. So that puts real limits.
It's really rotate. Because we have teachers that start at elementary workday and then end on a high school workday and vice versa.
But doesn't that mean we're putting, keeping those positions at full-time ahead of what you think is in the best interest of teaching and learning overall for the district? I mean, if you split those into two different part-time positions, you have a lot more, you'd have a lot more freedom, right?
In some cases, it can depend.
Yeah, I don't think you get the people to work part-time.
Yeah. I think it's the, it's fine, it's filling the positions.
Yeah, you have to have someone work point two.
When we had, in one of those dips of the population, we had those kind of like smaller clusters in seventh grade, when it was a point six science position, our candidate pool was three people.
Right.
When we went, when it became full-time, thank you. When it did, I mean, genuine thanks, that was, we had phenomenal. I mean, we had, we had a hard decision to make. We had four very strong clients. Or in past years, we had one. So I think it can depend in that way.
Another question about more budget-driven. Orla talked about this being a three-year rollout. And I looked at the, I was looking at the middle school science textbook line. So in twenty eighteen, it was ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-three was the actual. This year, we budgeted ten thousand. For FY twenty, we've only budgeted a thousand. Is that? So you brought your, cut, you practically, we've effectively eliminated the text, middle school science textbook line. Does that put you in a position where the changes, what you can do to continue rolling this out, or?
No. In reality, we hadn't a textbook line at the middle school in years.
I mean, I know that these aren't actual textbooks.
No, 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 no. Well, some of the, some of the, we really never had a line. It was like two hundred dollars or something.
Right, yeah, for years, it was zero.
For years. But then with the new rollout, we adopted the McGraw-Hill textbook that was aligned to the Massachusetts standards. It's not perfect, but it's what was there because there really wasn't much there. So we didn't purchase one per child because the teachers didn't feel the need. But we purchased a large cluster set. So I think it's like thirty, thirty-five books per cluster for sixth, seventh, and eighth. We also initially paid for the online ebook. But honestly, the teachers weren't that particularly thrilled with it. So we have walked away from that. And we have our textbooks now, so there was no need to keep it. And we shifted some of the money over into Owens, I think, Lyons, Michael, you know, and the Owens to pay for Study Island.
Yeah.
Study Island's cost was about three thousand a year. Actually, they gave us a discount this year, about two and a half, two six, something like that. So we shifted that money there out of our textbook account for next year.
That's still aligned with science. We could still see what is being spent on science curriculum.
Yeah, so the Department of Education now wants us to track all of the instructional software, which is apps in one line item.
Can we flag that internally so that we knew it's aligned to certain subject areas?
So, yeah, what we're trying to do is that we're trying to put together a Google sheet which where we can see where we're spending the money and what subjects matter.
I'm glad that Desi is undoing all the work. I've been working with the districts to push that back onto, not push it back, but to make those decisions on content, but go back to the content experts. So thank you, Desi, for undoing that. That's great. but go back to the content experts. So, thank you, Desi, for undoing that. That's great.
Sorry, I've got a question, and it might seem disrespectful, and I don't mean it to be that way, but I feel I need to share this. So I got this text this weekend. It said, is it really true that Blake doesn't have homework and grades anymore? And then I said, no, that's not true. But then that leads me to a somewhat connected perception within the community that, you know, with this, and even comments from my own child who was in at Blake last year, in terms of science doesn't matter because we don't get grades. So, and I hear a lot of parents talking about our kids, you know, maybe MCAS scores are dipping because kids don't really care about science, and then they get to the high school and bio, they're slammed, and now they don't know how to study for bio. And, you know, so I'm just trying to connect not just your internal piece, but the external piece and, and the perception. And the perception for many is their reality, you know, without digging deeper, without asking questions, without, you know, anyway. So I'm hoping you can respond to that.
So what I can say is that eighth grade science did one term of standard based reporting last year. So they had, let's say, traditional grades until then, so it was only in the third term that they switched. So I, I would have a tough time making that connection between their MCAS scores and how they were graded. Granted, in sixth and seventh grade, they certainly had standard based reporting. Oh, and only actually one term in seventh grade, yeah, because it's, it's almost rolled out right behind the new standards. As for the difference between middle school science and high school science, I mean, you're right, it is different. I know Robert will often says now, he says, now I get it after my own kids going through freshman biology. I could say two things. One, it's very difficult. It's molecular. It's not easy. I always say to the eighth grade parents that we'll see, I think it's the week after vacation, the biology we teach now is not the biology we learned in high school. We don't talk about animals and leaves and trees anymore. We don't do our little, you know, patterns of leaves and variation in leaves. It's all molecular, because that's where biology is right now. So it's very difficult for kids to access. I mean, there's no doubt about it. It can be very challenging. And the other piece I'll throw out, since we were talking about scheduling and time on learning, is, you know, three hours and thirty five minutes. Desi's recommendation is five hours. So we're squishing what they recommend you do in a five hour week into three hours and thirty five minutes, which means it's tough on the kids. You know, we move at a very, very efficient pace, and it's certainly challenging, yeah.
So along those lines with, with the bio, because I suppose I'm getting it at home now, and, you know, I have Francis, who's my senior, Luisa, who's my freshman. And, and, and at the very beginning of your presentation, you had said, we're continuously, we want to improve. So I'm wondering, you know, I saw slight shifts, you know, you're not calling it homework, and now it's check ins, or something in, in the language for the bio that I've noticed from my senior to my freshman. So I'm wondering, what are the constants, I mean, to just, I don't know, I, I just, I see my child with a hundred thirty four page PowerPoint of things to study, and I think, how are you going to study a hundred thirty four page PowerPoint? And I printed it out, so I know.
I've seen some, but I hesitate to think there are a hundred thirty slides.
I printed it.
But to your point, Anna, they are too long. You're not wrong. They are too long. I actually just said this to Jeff very recently, and it's something that we are looking at. It's not, interestingly enough, it's not that the content is inappropriate that's in there, because it's not. It's just there's a lot of repetition, which for a fifteen year old might not be very evident, to be honest. I just looked at one recently, and like I said, there's a lot of repetition in it that I think, you know, the eighty two slides that I saw, for example, could fairly easily be whittled down to fifty without a whole lot of effort on my part.
Would you say there's a pedagogical shift between the middle school and the high school?
I would, yeah. Certainly there is, yeah. I mean, I think part of it is, it's a one year course. It's the, you know, the pressure, whatever that mean, the pressure of MCAS. I mean, I think, you know, I mean, it is real. And I think that plays a role. We do very well in biology MCAS. I think we all like that we do very well. But in order to do that, it's, you know, a lot of hard work has to go into getting those scores. I don't know if I answered exactly.
No, I just think this is, this is part of a bigger conversation, and I think it's important to have.
I'll touch on the thing too, like, you know, so to answer that text, I would say also ask that person to reach out to the teachers and to us. I, I mean, not trying to be snarky, but I think, like, engage in that conversation, but we are giving homework. We have not, I think that's been a big perception. I think that's been a thing of like, Nat's trying to get rid of homework since he, you know, took over, blah, blah, blah. Like, all things aside, the big, that was a big piece of the homework policy, make sure that is purposeful and meaningful. I still don't think a lot of the homework that we're giving at Blake is purposeful and meaningful, to be very honest. I think it's busy. And I think that as a parent is comforting though, since what we knew and what we saw. I think when it's big shift educationally, and I could go off on this big tangent, but I think that's a big piece of, what are we assessing learning? Are we just assessing what we think is learning? I don't think we are. I think we're really in a very hard place right now, educationally. Because I think we know what's right, have a better sense, I don't know is too strong a word, of what's right for kids, yet our practices still don't reflect that. And I think that's a piece that we're looking at. So I do think that's a piece about that. And then I think getting to that idea of grades and feedback and motivation. There's a lot of research out there about what does motivate, is it motivate to get good grades or motivation to learn? And that's a big difference. And I think the research is pretty strong, and we've been doing some work, fortunate that Coalition helped fund some professional development. And I think I mentioned earlier in the year that we had hope this would come to fruition. So, Chris, of course, we have a connection with Christine Power, who's a resident in town, works at the DC at the Lincoln School. One of her colleagues is one of the leading experts in assessments, Nathaniel Brown. We started working with him last Wednesday, formerly in professional development, looking at calibration, which is really, really interesting when you think about it. Because we started going to work with him, he said, no matter what system you use, whether it's traditional grades, narratives, conferencing, whatever it is, if teachers aren't calibrated, it is useless. And I think that's the biggest thing, is hard calibration, how do you calibrate? And that's what we started to look at in that sense. And he presented a lot of research about grade inflation, where did it happen? It happened since nineteen forties. In that way, talked a lot about, I mean, just, again, it's a big piece, looking at that, how are we doing that? So I think calibration, the two myths that he talks about, that one is that quantitative grades are more subjective. They're not. So that standard deviation of testing, I mean, all things aside, I turned over, I said, when we talk about ACT and SAT scores, he talked about the standard deviation goes sixty points either way, about what a student really knows. So if a student gets a six hundred on the SATs, realistically, what they know could be between a five forty and a six sixty. I mean, on a test where a student gets an eighty five, standard deviation of what the student actually knows is between a seventy five and a ninety five. So I think focusing more on what students know, the idea of partial merit versus partial credit, that may sound semantics, but really looking at that and that calibration. But that gets that piece of making sure that parents understand what we're doing, and kids understand. So part of the funding is to do some work, and I think the hard part would be have parents come, be very transparent, I mean.
Yeah, I have to say, now, you, you've done yeoman's work over the course of the years that you've been moving to standard based grading to, to put the word out. And I think, I mean, you can lead a horse of water, but you can't make them drink. I, so to me, there are two problems with standard based grading as it's been implemented. And, and first of all, I think standard based grading is clearly where education is going, especially at that level. And I get that parents don't, don't yet embrace it. They also didn't embrace the whole language at some point. They didn't, the new math is no longer new, but, you know, parents are reluctant to, to embrace something that's not the way they were taught. But to me, I, you know, as we talk, I just want to loop it back to, the, the time blocks, I think, are a little bit inconsistent with trying to teach standard based grading. And I think really standard based grading works best when you have conferences, which we don't have at the middle school, we don't have at the high school. And if you really want to do standard based grading, I think you have to have that.
Yeah, and I would wholeheartedly agree. I think that's the piece of looking at that idea of feedback. I would say, so we did a Google forum with the teachers, asked them all to kind of respond very quickly, like, what are takeaways? Two biggest takeaways, actually, the biggest takeaways, we're giving too much feedback to kids. I mean, very honestly, we talked about that, we drowned kids in red ink. And first of all, that's not actionable for a kid. That becomes very overwhelming. Maybe analogy to a doctor, you go to a doctor, you need to lose weight. What do you need to do? You need to go on this diet. You need to go to the gym. You need to eat fats. No, don't eat fats. All these things become overwhelming, we're basically like too much. The reality is, you need to be told, go to the gym three days a week, go on the elliptical for twenty minutes, come back in four weeks, let's see where you're at. One step at a time feedback. And I would say, it was amazing to see the responses, we were looking at the responses from teachers, teachers really saying, I'm getting way too much feedback. Really focus on that piece. And then that idea of feedback and conferencing, when we talk about a teacher eval, the most effective way to get a teacher to understand is sitting down, having a conversation with them. And really talk about one area from that lesson. What's the one thing you're going to take away for tomorrow? Not one of the nineteen things. I think oftentimes, we think we're helping by giving all this feedback, but what are you going to do? And I would ask Maddie, and she gets back an essay with all comments all over it, and that's overwhelming, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think, Chris, to your point, absolutely, think about like, really building a time for student conferencing and also parent conferencing. Because I think one thing, Anna, maybe we've talked about that idea of working into our school culture sort of that we give every year, some questions around motivation and feedback. Asking parents, what is the type of information that helps you have a conversation with a child? I think when we did that midyear advisory reflection this past two weeks ago, where we asked six points of questions for kids to fill out, sharing those questions with parents, we always get the feedback back saying, thank you, now I know what to ask my kid about an informal report, versus how'd you do? I mean, like, really kind of giving them some prompts in that way to do that, which I think sometimes, you know, you could say, well, parents should know. I, it's overwhelming. And that, like, what do you do with that feedback? I think that's a piece we've done to a standard based reporting for teachers. I think some of our teachers are giving too much feedback, which does become overwhelming.
And seventh grade science certainly is right now, because we're reporting on the content, we're reporting on the science and engineering practices, and we're reporting on the.
Pages.
And to be fair, the teachers wanted to try it. They just wanted to see what it looked like, although they knew sort of going in, this is probably going to be crazy, and we've already established that next year we're going to consolidate down. And we're probably, we're going to pilot it in any case, this idea of only reporting through the science and engineering practices, and pulling all of that content that really, I'm not sure how much it means to somebody, especially the way some of these things are worked.
And I would say, where we're at is not perfect. I mean, by any means, I'm not saying we're doing it right. Will Richardson talks a lot about doing the wrong things right and doing the right things wrong. I think we're doing the right things wrong right now in school. I think we're in a better direction. We need some work to do with. The other piece that I think we're talking about for students and parents is that idea of meeting the standard. Oftentimes, we want to say about exceeding the standard. I don't love that, that idea of giving it like a four, as opposed to a three point scale. One downside of that is people revert right back to A, B, C, D. Those are two very different schools of thought. Or a three is a B, a four is a C. They're not. What we are missing is the idea of giving feedback on kids that are able to generalize the skill. And I think there is that piece, or to interpret it in a new context. And I think that's something we would like to have. Because I think that kind of wide range of threes, that gets back to calibration. Orla and I are both teaching seventh grade science, it's her three, the same as my three. And if not, we're now seeing a different two, going back to common assessment. So I think kind of working on that work, I'm really excited about. So I think with that parent end piece, I think is important. I think it will help that we'll have a BC expert, I mean, honestly, to kind of talk about, but kind of hoping.
You can't do much better than a BC expert, so.
But I think, I mean, we can kind of share some of that.
Especially on assessment, actually.
About that, what are we assessing? Because, I mean, the other idea is that he talked about with motivation, that grades don't motivate students to learn. They motivate kids to get good grades. And, and I think having teased that out. I will also say, having a freshman right now in a different school system, I mean, it's a humbling experience having a kid go through, like, as an educator, I mean, seeing things, but she had eighth gradeitis, and she's probably telling me she ever saw this tape, but she had eighth gradeitis more than any senior. And then I was like, oh my gosh, she's going to tank in high school. Like, what's going to happen? She's like, Dad, you always say grades don't matter. Middle school doesn't matter. And I'm like, oh, great, you know, but in that way, but in that sense of the whole piece, she's like, I'll kick it in. She had a little bit of wake up call, but she's kicked it in. I mean, there is that reality that we know, so it's kind of hard to tease out some of that. So I'm not trying to like avoid it, but I think it's in that way.
And talking about conferences, some of the science teachers have actually done, not with parents, but have actually had conferences with their students in class at the midyear point and generally speaking throughout the year, sort of little mini conferences quite regularly, because I've sat in their classes and seen this happening. But to your point, I've forgotten who said this, it is important to have student feedback. I mean, I know Maddie can describe what we do in my class, for example, when I, when I give them feedback on their test, they actually have to respond back to it through a form we have through classroom, so that I know they understood what it was I was trying to say. And I, you can talk about it, Maddie. I think it helps, but.
Yeah, I think it helps, especially because like, to be honest, when I get an essay back, if I got a good grade, I'm not going to look at the feedback. So when teachers do stuff like that, it like helps, because then you actually look at the feedback and you make sure you understand what's going on. Because in like, obviously, there's always room for improvement. So like, with the grades where it's like exceeds expectations, like, yeah, you're doing great, but I honestly think that everyone can do a little bit better. So I think that, like, I don't know. I, I don't know. This is an interesting conversation.
So the idea too, that Nathaniel, he kind of worked on some proper snaps and rub apps on learning, so that idea, everyone can improve. So if you do this, we can put that. So I think that's a piece, feedback on rubrics. Most of our rubrics are progressively negative and pejorative. But he says it's very easy to define, to define perfection. It's really hard to define imperfection. So it's like, yeah, we know when someone's got it, but then what do we do? And it's almost like, we just have to state rubrics for MCAS, it's like, got the standard, and then it's like progressively worse versus starting here progressively better and building off of that. So I think that's that idea of motivation and feedback, but it's going to take some time.
Well, now, I, I do, you've covered a lot of ground in a short period of time.
Not a short period of time.
No, in trying to sum up my approach, I think, to the problems that school committee can support in solving, things like, you know, strategic scheduling, which is a large movement across education to address that climate issue and the crisis issue that is facing education today, because without sounding too alarmist, I agree with you one hundred percent. If my son brings home a hundred and thirty page PowerPoint and someone calls it their curriculum, I am pretty sure that I'm going to be very upset whether I'm not on the school committee or not, it will probably show up here on TV. Because a, twenty years ago, when I was encouraging teachers to use integrated technology, and they would come to me over the summertime and tell me they spent the whole summer taking their stills and putting them on PowerPoint, and that was integration of technology, I probably should have just quit at that point in time and moved on to another profession. And so that's why I asked about a pedagogical approach, because we can't teach next gen biology with yesterday's PowerPoint.
But in fairness, I wouldn't want you to think that that's what the biology is doing, because they absolutely aren't.
But that's, but that's what are alarming word, that's.
No, no, I understand. But I, I don't want to misrepresent what they're doing either. They're doing an awful lot of really interesting work in terms of differentiation in their classroom, that they do on a daily basis, organizing kids. It's all been this blended learning out of the FUSE program. But I don't want, I don't want you to get the sense that they're standing up lecturing every day, because that's not what.
And just, just as we're, our budget's up against schools versus roads, you're up against test, test scores that equal our property values, and then pedagogy that equals our children's learning and happiness, right?
And I would say, as a teacher, and I didn't have as high accountability, when I taught sixth grade math, it was an MCAS subject. And I remember, like, you feel that. It is scary. And you're sitting there like, I've got to get this, because you feel responsibility that, that piece, and whether it's, and I will say, it's never felt from school committees, it's never felt from central office, it's just that inherent piece of like, yikes, is this reflection on me? And then also setting your students up, it's that fear. So that is a piece, I think, that if you haven't taught that, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around. So I do empathize in that way. And I would agree, it's universal. I mean, from a parenting perspective, my own child, I've shared this with anyone that I can, you know, he's in sixth grade in school, they have a math, she comes home halfway through sixth grade saying, because they're now at the halfway point of sixth grade, we need to start thinking about seventh grade, thinking, oh, my board, like, what? And then it was, well, with that, we're going to adopt the seventh grade math policy of homework, and they go, don't use the P word, that's what school committee word, policy. But, okay, he's telling me to shut up in the corner, but I'm reading this, but then literally saying, the policy is, if you get below, only kids that can do a retake are below seventy five. You guys put a big stake in the ground about their beliefs on learning. And why, like, why seventy five? And this is how crazy, and this is a very good teacher, very good teacher, but just, have they had time to really examine their practice? Only if you, you can retake, you can make it up to an E. So what if you get a seventy seven the first time? I mean, it's just funny, this is a math teacher, they know numbers. But, you know, that whole idea of beliefs on learning and things, I think what's, it is easier to do at a middle school and elementary, where you not have that pressure of transcripts, to be very honest. I mean, I think that's the thing, that fear of, I think, high school teachers doing, what if we do this system that we think is right? How are we going to, like, what? You know, and, I mean, Jeff, you text the other night about what the message we called for, GPAs, transcripts and things, it's hard.
It's the game of school. When you get to high school, and it's unfortunate by far.
Well, I know I asked you guys to come in, and I appreciate it. I, I do think, to me, the biggest things we can do for you are not in terms of budget, but in terms of really continuing and maybe accelerating the SEL task force's work on scheduling. Because I, I do think forty three minutes is not, I thought it when my, my kids were there, I still think it's, it's not really, it's not a middle school model. That's, you know, we have the clusters, we have all the structure for middle school model, but forty three minute periods is not a middle school model.
I would agree, Chris. And one piece too, that we talked about the challenge of like extending to school day, we also have a very, very healthy, which is awesome, extra help support day. I mean, I think that's something to kind of think about too. Teacher's contract and things like, I mean, that's something to think about. The other piece that we've talked about is, we've talked about like the idea of a late bus for kids to support. We have some students, we, in some of our bias work that we're doing, there's a big assumption that all kids can get a ride after school, that's just not true. You know, and the reality of all of our business schedule, we're far busier as a culture, no matter what socioeconomic status than we were before. That's a piece that I think it would be, you know, I'm asking for more money now, when I know they've got paper, the impression for last, and those are the realities.
That comes as a whole new schedule.
And I do think what we have in place is a culture in our district of incredibly professional committed teachers, pre K twelve, that are willing to dive in and do all that work, and what are the structures that can allow for some of that?
I think scheduling is definitely achievable. In fact, I know it's achievable, so that's, you know, and I'm sure I'm not alone on that. Because it's, it's not, forty three minutes is not a good high school model either. So, and it's been a long time since I've seen that.
Maddie, don't get your homework on science, blame me.
I already finished, so we're all.
Thank you so much. You guys are doing great work. Thank you.
Is this yours, Anna?
No. No.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Lord. All right, transportation.
Yes, another light topic.
Before we head into financial policy?
Exactly. This is one for financial policy. Transportation fees. So this was something that we discussed at the public hearing. And Anna May had asked me to put it on and just have a general conversation now. And if you wanted to direct me in any, in any direction on this. You know, certainly I'll be willing to get any data you want, information, and bring it forward. But I just want to continue the conversation from a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I know we've talked about it every year since I've been on school committee, and it's always been traffic or various things. But I just thought it would be an interesting endeavor to really do some due diligence on this. Especially as we're getting squeezed, so to speak, that it would be interesting to see what our surrounding towns are, we're doing. The feedback from families, how much this would generate, what it would cover, because I think we'd only get buy-in if it really equates to something tangible. About what's the value add.
I think one of the struggles, I guess, and probably the tension in the town would be, we would look at it as a way to raise revenue, to add additional positions or additional supports for kids. Other folks would look at it as a way to reduce the budget by that amount, right? So that, we need to kind of work that out a little bit, talk, talk a little bit about that. I mean, I think that a good place to start is, Michael and I can go back and get a couple of things. One, look at the data from around, other districts around the communities. Remember that regional districts like DS can't charge, but everyone else around us can. And then do some projections based on what we have seven through twelve, because I think that's probably the easiest place to start. Because we're not required to bus seven through twelve kids. So that would be an immediate implementation without doing the mileage that we'd have to do with elementary kids. And just get some projections to talk about. I mean, I think right now, we're just kind of talking about the concept, but let's look at some real hard data and then have a conversation about it. And then you folks decide what you want to do. But at least if I can get all that information and Michael and I can bring it forward, then you can at least have a real conversation about real numbers and real impacts.
Can I add to, can I add to that, that Anna May, sorry Jess? You, you mentioned a buy-in, and I know that Nat even just said it too. And as a parent of a kid in middle school, I think that buy-in would be that late bus. And I know that you here said, I drive my kid and I, I won't pay for a bus because I don't use it. But even if you're driving your kid to school in the morning or picking them up at, you know, after school, there is a time that you will need that late bus. I mean, exactly for what he's saying too, that some kids can't stay for extra help because.
It's an equity thing.
Mom and dad work, or they're not available, right?
It's a continuing assumption.
Impede someone's education because they can't get home, you know? And, and from my own experience, I've heard a lot of my neighbors, my friends, they all say, why don't we have a late bus? So it might soften the blow of actually, you know, saying, oh, you're going to have to pay for it now. Well, here's your carrot you're dangling is the, is the late bus. So I agree, that's a great starting point.
I was actually going to ask that you look at districts and see if those districts that do have bus fees, if they do have a late transportation bus. One of my concerns, and it's one of the things that we talked about when we extended the elementary school day, was that Medfield for a long time has simply been assumed that there are two parents and one of them works and the other one stays home. And that is not the truth. It's a perception, and it's also going to be continued to be even less of the truth. And we need to be able to support kids, you know, if we are considering changing virtually everything in so many ways about our district right now. In terms of how we deliver elementary school education, schools and schedules and everything else. We also need to be looking at this piece of what are our kind of cultural expectations in, in our town, you know? And really, it's, it is an equity issue. At the same time, there's an equity issue around the money. And that one family with three children will feel that burden much, much more than perhaps another family with three children. And we have already seen that with our tax rates. So we need to be very mindful of that. And it's, it's just a tough balance, but.
Yeah, I would inquire too about some of the programs that they do. I know it's a lot of farming work you're going to have to do, both of you around that. But there is the, there's a one child, two child, three child rate.
Sure.
And a max for households, yeah.
Most have maxes. But, you know, the max is also steep. You know, I think in Westwood, the max is what, a thousand? Over three?
I think that's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're up there. I know Noah's up there as well. I mean, they're all, they're all up there.
Yeah, Noah charges for buses, but they don't charge for trash pickup, so it says something about their, their priorities in the town.
Well, and I pay seventy-five dollars every two years for a trash sticker and they'll take everything, so.
Which is probably the best bargain in the state.
It is an astounding bargain.
So I'll, I'll take care of that, and then we'll put on the agenda next meeting, and then I'll have some information to give you prior to that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, town of Medfield budget policy.
So in your packet, you have the budget policy that I believe the board of selectmen approved in July. And that was something I think that Chris and Mike Markucci were working on last year. And I think in this very room, we had that large meeting with warrant committee, board of selectmen, school committee. And we talked about, you know, budget priorities for the future and et cetera, and that was brought up at that meeting. So right after that meeting, we posted this on our website under the FY nineteen budget information, so it's been there for almost a year now. And I know that the board of selectmen and Christine had come to me this week and asked if we would take a look at it. Because they signed off on it, and there's a spot for school committee, and we hadn't really talked about it. So we put on the agenda for tonight, and I think something we should talk about. And there's some things in there that are helpful and other things that we probably really should strongly consider, so.
I was under the impression that they did not want to sign it. So they, they've signed it and everybody.
They signed it in July, I was told.
This is separate from the, there was a.
There was two of them.
There was, there was a separate.
Maybe I'm thinking the MOU?
Right.
Yeah.
Negotiation with respect to the override, that ultimately the board of selectmen decided not to enter into.
Right, okay, I'm sorry.
At, at the same time, we were discussing this document, and I confess it's a year ago, and I, I don't remember why the school committee would be a signatory on here. Because there's no, we don't do anything on it. This is a policy set. I actually think this should be, if, if this is going to be adopted, it ought to be adopted by town meeting, given that it, it purports to prohibit town meeting from expending free cash, for example, down below two point five the annual. Does anybody know, Michael, do you know what the ratio of free cash to the annual operating budget is now?
So it's, it's just over two million right now in free cash.
Compared to an operating budget like.
Five.
Sixty percent of the overall budget, yeah.
Do that math for me, what is that? Is that like three point three percent?
They say that they want to have five percent in free cash of their operating budget per year. That's what they would like to maintain as a minimum.
No, it says two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent? That was, they were, yeah, you should read their own document, because that's what they were talking about in the warrant committee.
It would seem that all departments would have to sign this, right?
No, it's just, the form that I saw that was signed by them, it was board of selectmen, school committee. That was it.
I think to some extent, there is a, a message here saying that. And, and it might be implicit, that they would like the school committee to sign this so that we understand the message of the town. That they feel as though schools are a major part of our budget. And they'd like us to, to realize that. And, and I think that we, we do realize that, that that's not a, a question. We live here. But to, to the extent that we should sign a budget regarding board of selectmen's, or sign a, a document regarding the board of selectmen's policy for the town. I mean, that's the board of the selectmen. Otherwise, we're entering into an agreement that I think, you're right, every town department should have to sign. I just don't know that there's any part that actually holds us to anything.
I, I do, I mean, I recall the part of this was related to the creation of capital, they, capital, capital stabilization fund. But I think it might be helpful just to invite the chairman of the board, board of selectmen to come in and help us better understand what this means for our, for our own budgeting purposes. I mean, I know that they're, you know, I know part of this is to try to maintain a good bond rating. What's our bond rating now, Michael?
It's double A, double A plus.
Double A plus, yeah. And so, I mean, it's, it's a lot of a goal, but we've maintained it really well so far. And I know Mr. Markucci did reach out to me to remind me that we needed to act on this. And I confess I didn't look at it till this morning, when I, after I watched the videos more closely and tried to reorient myself, put myself back to where we were a year ago. Again, I think it'd be helpful if they come in, if, if just, just, so he doesn't have to post a meeting of just the chairman, which I think is still Mike.
Evidently, our rating has fallen, from what I understand.
What's that?
The warrant commission informed me that our bond rating has dropped below a certain amount.
Hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed.
Has not changed.
They fear it will change because.
We're not at the highest level? I think they ever were at the highest level.
Right. But that goes with every single municipality in the country. So there's been a lot of talk about it will fall because of the ways we're supposed to report. But that's so across the board, yeah.
So I move that we table this and invite Mr. Markucci to come in.
Sure.
Great.
I feel very much the same way.
Oh, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, of course.
Do we have to vote to table?
Vote to table.
Okay, all right.
Because it was new business, I'm sure we otherwise had to act.
All right. Other items since posting on February seventh?
No, I have nothing about it, sure.
Great. FY twenty budget?
So in your packet, I just went through the exercise after, you know, having a conversation with the warrant committee chair, Mr. Pastore. He had mentioned to me that one of the things that the warrant committee was looking at is the impact of what a three percent increase would be on the school department. Versus, at that time, I think it was a four point eight five, which is now a four point five. So we just put together this very, very short document that, first of all, identifies what that would be in terms of a reduction. So that'd be a reduction of five hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. So essentially, if we look at the positions that we added in FY nineteen through the override, and we all remember that whole process last year. If we go to a three percent increase, instead of a four point five percent increase, we essentially, essentially negate all that. So we look at the FTE in unit A would be five hundred eighteen thousand, that reduction. If we're at almost eighty percent salaries, and most of that is teacher salaries, then we're not going to count pencils to see whether we get the five hundred thousand dollars out of pencils. We're looking at staff. So we have five hundred eighteen thousand dollars there. We looked in supplies and services, which we had an increase of twenty thousand dollars in FY twenty. We level funded that to reduce that number completely by twenty thousand. So the total cut is that five thirty-eight number. And then FY twenty budget at three percent is thirty-six million, one twenty-two, eight eighteen. So, you know, I don't know why we even have this conversation, quite frankly, because we really had an agreement, I thought, in principle of, if it was a six point one percent, we would try to keep it around four percent. I think we did a pretty good job explaining that at the last meeting, why it's four percent, why it's not four percent. I got the questions from the warrant committee, which we're going to, which I forwarded to you this afternoon, which we'll discuss at the warrant committee meeting. I thought we were pretty clear about that. And I, I feel like this is just going backwards. I, I honestly feel like this is an exercise in, in making sure that folks that weren't happy with the override make sure the school department goes through their paces in FY twenty. And that's the feeling I get.
I, I'm not sure I agree with that. I do think, you know, that, we've talked in past budget cycles that, you know, sometimes the school department budget's gone up by, before your time. Without overrides, it's gone up by six percent, five percent, seven percent. And in, in almost all of those years, it was a big part of that percentage increase was unexpected increases in two areas. Kids, teaching kids with disabilities and transporting kids with disabilities. Those are inherently unpredictable. One year, I remember Greg Sullivan was on the warrant committee and was, I want to say incredulous, because he, he certainly believed us. But we had one IEP, which required a two hundred fifty thousand dollar placement. A student moved in, moved into the district, you know, mid, it wasn't sort of a kindergarten or we could see coming, or something like that. And we had an obligation, a moral and, and legal obligation to teach that student under his eye, his or her IEP. I honestly don't know what it was. So if you take out, and so every year that we've done that, in the nine years I've done budgets with the warrant committee, I think I, other than maybe Joanna Hilbert, I think I've been on longer than, than any of them has been on the, the warrant committee. But every year we've done that, we sort of have set those costs aside, because we don't control them, we can't predict them. And we have a legal and moral obligation to them. And this year, you know, the, the specialized transportation budget of the, the four point, remind me the number, four.
Five.
Of the four point five percent increase in the budget, the, the point five percent of that, a little more than that, is just that unexpected increase in, in special education transportation costs. So if you take out that unexpected and uncontrollable cost, you're at four percent. And then you look at special education tuitions, that's another point four, which really means that, from my perspective, this is about a three point five or three point six percent increase in the budget. Which we know is, is essentially level funded, because three point two percent increase, around three point two percent increase, covers salaries. So, you know, I'm always looking for ways to cut the budget, and we talked about, you know, looking for, for, you know, ways to, to make some savings in textbooks and things like that. To me, that's going to end up frankly nibbling around the edges. I think we, we built this budget in a way, really, when we built last year's budget, it was with a couple of year look forward. And we've, we've adhered to what we said we were going to do there, except for what are unexpected and uncontrollable expenses. And, and as a town, I think we have an obligation to those expenses. We can't, we can't cut teachers to make up, you know, special education costs. We have an obligation to do the special education costs, and if the money's just not there, then that's what we'll have to do, is cut teachers. We have an obligation to transport kids with disabilities. And if, if we, if, we don't have a choice on that. And so if we have to make a cut, we'd have to cut teachers. But this exercise in sort of, what does it look like to get to three percent? And I know, look, I was the one who said to the warrant committee, what we're going to do. I made the, the commitments. And when I made those commitments, I was clear about, subject to special education costs.
Enrollment.
Subject to enrollment. And even when we had that document that the selectmen didn't enter into, those were both very clearly laid out in there. It's things that were unpredictable and not within the commitments we were making. So I, I feel a little bit like, you know, putting together a budget at three percent is forcing us to sort of, to put our heads, a, a figurative gun to the heads of the voters. In the same way that a lot of towns will say, hey, if you don't approve our override, we're going to cut all sports. And towns have sort of stopped doing that because it's a stupid sort of stick-up. But for a while, that was how towns got their first two or three overrides. So they said, well, just cut football. And all of a sudden, there's a big uproar. We've never done that in Medfield, we've never made threats. And I think that to, to even put together a three percent budget is putting us in a position where we're making threats that were, that just aren't appropriate. This town's not going to support a three percent budget, town, town meeting's not going to support a three percent budget. You know, I think there are, there probably are some, some savings that can be achieved in the budget. I think that, you know, we'll continue to look at those, especially as we talked about in the sort of renewal areas of textbooks that I think we're not using. And maybe those are just poorly defined, because we're stuck with the, the MUNI system and what it lets us define our costs as. But, I mean, even as Orla said today, things are put into textbooks that may not always be textbooks these days. But I think it'd be irresponsible for us to really entertain a three percent budget. I think, again, what we have here is a three point five percent budget, plus a little more than one percent of costs that we just don't control. That we said last year we didn't control, wouldn't going to be able to control, weren't going to be able to predict. And, you know, sometimes that, those numbers go down. And when those numbers go down, often our budget goes up by like. Our budget, of course, never goes down to Mr. Wolf's greatest mayor. Budget never goes down, but it does go up by less. It's always going to go up by some because of, because our biggest expense is personnel, and people deserve raises every year. But, and they're very modest raises, I want to point out. But I think that, you know, it'd be irresponsible for us to really fully discuss a three percent budget. And I, I expressed this to the chairman of the warrant committee last week too. I think it's, it's. it's not the way we've done budgeting. It's not the way in nine years of doing budgets, we've ever done it. And I, I just don't think we should start now.
I, I just feel like that there's trying, there's trying to be a setup to put the school department as the cause for overrides for the future. And then looking at, you know, whatever budget we come, we come for, whether it's fiscal year, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever that is, that the increase is gonna be tied to override all the time. And that's what I feel like the setup is. And it's a little frustrating.
And that's where we were. Look, before I was on the school committee, that's where we were. We had an override every year. I think we had, what?
Five out of six years.
Four out of six years, or something like that. And we've had two now, since I've been on the committee, one my first year and one last year. And I actually, frankly, have been very proud of that. And it's not just the work we've done on this committee, but it's the work that the warrant committee has done to recognize what is, what are needs and what are wants. And this budget, I wish there were more wants in it. You know, you tried for your first three years here to put a Gibson Talented program into the budget. You've given up, right? That's a want that you had.
Kind of given up.
Well, it's not been in the budget, so.
Right, it hasn't been there.
Right? So, there are a lot of things that we would like to do as a district. We'd like to be able to expand the day. Some of that's gonna cost, take, it's gonna cost more money, depending on how we can negotiate that with the union. We'd like to be able to have parent-teacher conferences at the middle and high school level. I think we should be doing that. That would cost, you know, that, there's a cost associated with that. We're not putting a lot of the things that would move us forward as a district, any of the things that would move us forward in the district. There are some, obviously. We, we've put in money to, to improve in certain areas. That's caused us to draw back in other areas. But a three and a half percent budget that doesn't include the unexpected costs, to me, is, is quite responsible, particularly when you look at the fact that just our teacher salaries, I, I think consumes three point two percent. Increase in teacher salaries consumes three point two percent. And that's based on, what was the, what does the teacher's contract base number go up next year?
Two percent.
Two percent? Okay. So, a two percent increase in the base results in a, in a three point two percent increase. So, that's the way I feel about it.
So, along those lines, if you got a chance to look at the questions I sent you that I got from the warrant committee, the first question talks about the Lexington plan that Mr. Murby is, is asking us to take a look at, or the town to adopt, which essentially splits up the percentage of, of spending in the town, school and town, percentage of each, and it stays static, I guess. I, I need to take a look, closer look at it. I just got another copy of it this afternoon. So, that's another thing that's kind of thrown at us, too. So, we need to look at that. You know, I'll get that to you if you haven't seen that. But that's something that, I'm not sure the warrant committee is, is married to that idea. I don't know, but I know Mr. Murby's been, been pushing that for the board's selectmen, at least. So, that's really taking a model of the town of Lexington uses with their revenue and splitting it by a percentage. Some goes to town, some goes to school. So, we need to look at that as well.
Yeah, and other towns do that. I mean, in Norwood, it's a fifty-five, forty-five split. In, in Lexington, I think it's seventy thirty, seventy thirty or sixty-four.
Seventy-four in Lexington.
Seventy-four.
To the schools, yeah.
And, and again, we've never done that here, because it, it really, it pits departments against each other in a way that we've never done with the warrant committee here. Now, again, look, I, you know, my first seven warrant committee meetings on the budget were in the warrant committee room, where it was the warrant committee, the superintendent, myself, and the other budget representative. And nobody else showed up. I'm glad that people are more interested in the budget now and are paying more attention. But that shouldn't result in a more politicized process, which is what I, I think is happening. The budget
No question.
in this town, there, of course, there are politics in, in the budget. But the budget reflects the town's priorities. And it always has. And I think to try to create factions to sort of bid against each other, you know, is, is not as constructive as we've been for so long. And, and, and it's, you know, I think that dates to a time when we did have to have overrides four out of six years. And we have only had two in ten years now. And I think that's going, my personal view is that's going in the wrong direction.
So, that's the three percent. That's the numbers. And Michael and I will work on vacation week next week to get those questions answered for the warrant committee. And quite frankly, there's some on there that have been asked for many years.
Right.
I'm not so sure I'm gonna spend much time on them. I really don't think I'm going to. As I said last year, I think, or the year before, if someone keeps asking me the same questions, they're gonna get the same answer. They can answer, they can ask me four different ways, but the same answer's gonna come out. So, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. But there are some other questions in there that will take some time that we'll, we'll go through, but.
What exactly is the Lexington model, Jeff? Did you say it was seventy-four percent?
Well, Lexington is seventy-four. I believe the one that Mr. Murby's doing is seventy-one to the schools here.
And what's it currently?
He says, he did analysis, and he, he said that was, that's been the split, seventy-one percent of the schools. So, to keep that consistent. The problem is, is that when you look at it, and the percentage-wise, from, again, from the email that I saw this afternoon, is that it looks like the school's a one point six million off that number. So, that'll require an over, so that would set us up for overrides every year to kind of do what we're doing. One point six, I believe. Michael, am I right? One point six?
It was one point six.
One point six. And I think the town was a hundred sixty-six thousand. That was their portion over. But I, I don't want to get too into it, because I really didn't read the entire thing well enough to get into it. I only saw the, the first part, which delineated what that percentage would be and how much it would be.
The way the Lexington model works is the town takes in all its revenues.
Yep.
And then they pay all the shared costs. So, we have a number of shared costs. And then after the shared costs, they divide, they create a ratio of what's left in the budget. And that's, that effectively, for the school department, sets the budget, the bottom line budget. The other, the town departments figure out how to divide on the town.
And if I'm not mistaken, it also means not using free cash to offset any budget piece either. So, I think that's something that, that this town, every town's been doing for years. I mean, there's, there's a reason why if free cash is there, it's turned back from the, from the community or whatever, from the other departments. So, it's not like you're using stabilization. That's a whole different story. But if you, free cash is there for this purpose.
Right, every department contributes to free cash.
Members of the warrant committee, arguably, in this, they disagree, and that's okay. But from my perspective, my job to advocate for the kids, it's there for that purpose.
Well, and it comes from prior year's budgets that are unspent.
Exactly. It's all turned back from the department.
It's allocated.
Turned back, you know.
It's allocated.
When we get Medicaid reimbursements, we turn that back and, and that becomes free cash.
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay.
Very good. All right. I think next is the calendar. Am I right?
Right. So, in your packet was the FY, excuse me, FY, sorry, I'm stuck on budget.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, school calendar. So, the leadership team and I met, went through and put out our release days. We've got a lot of positive feedback about release days before and after long weekends. So, we stuck a few in there. Parents have been very positive about that. Our attendance rates really haven't suffered at all during that time. So, we feel pretty good about putting that in there. But we have the additional professional development that we added this year for the first time. And as you can see, it's, it gets us out a little bit later than this year. But that's based on a couple of additional days that are in there. We put DLD, Digital Learning Day, in March, the end of March, instead of April, and we have it this year. So, we just moved some things around.
The PMK and AMK, where you've done the half-days with no PMK at the beginning of the year, and the half-days with no AMK at the end. That's a slight switch, right?
We did it this year.
We did this year.
Yeah, this year was the first year we did it.
And how has that gone? What's the feedback?
So far, it's been positive. Yeah, I think we'll have to reevaluate at the end of the year, but so far, we're nothing, you know, registered about it. But we don't, we tried to make it equitable, because in years past, it wasn't. You know, the kids in, in afternoon kindergarten just weren't getting the amount of time that kids in mornings. So, we wanted to try to make that equitable.
Okay. All right, so.
Anything else that, that popped up as you were looking at it that was a complicating factor that you thought of?
No.
No?
No. I think we, what we tried to do this year is, we did get some feedback from parents that the elementary conferences right next to our release day was problematic. So, I know, I think a couple of you got that feedback as well. So, we changed that this year, because we made the December one, December conferences and the March conferences away from those release days. The only one that we're a little concerned about, because of that, is that December release day on the eighteenth. It's, it's kind of placed there, but we tried to eliminate the whole issue of, of the conferences there. So, we, we wanted to try that. It makes that week a little.
It's always a tough month.
Yeah, it's a tough week.
Yeah.
With respect to the holidays, Jeff, I know the, the contract provides that teachers can't have a day before or day after a long weekend or holiday off.
Correct.
And I know you have discretion to permit that when people ask you. And certainly, that's within your discretion. But I do think there have been a lot of teachers taking those days. And, you know, as somebody who's, you know, I can't take those days, because my wife teaches, so she's on those days. I find that, you know, if the kids are, if I'm forcing the kids to go on the day before a holiday, and their teacher isn't there, that's really sending the total wrong message. I, I, you know, I certainly understand that there are extenuating circumstances.
Right.
But by and large, you know, there's a lot of time off built into a, a school calendar for teachers. And I, you know, I, I think it should be the exception rather than the rule to have, I'm not suggesting that half the teachers are, that it's the rule.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
That people are taking that time. But I do think, again, it's totally within your discretion. I'm, you know, I can't tell you what to do about it. But I, I, as a parent, I, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't say I was frustrated that, you know, I think with every vacation, one of my daughter's teachers was out the day before. And that's just because, she says, well, why am I going, you know?
Yeah.
So, and I think she's right about that.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that to see what the actual number is. I know that I try to do that on, you know, circumstances that we, you know, someone is in a wedding or something like that before. I try to be, you know, sensitive to that. I don't think it's really just done for folks to get cheaper flights or that kind of thing. I really don't. But I could look at the, look at the data on it.
Great. Thanks. Otherwise, I move to approve the calendar.
But not any cheaper.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Classists?
I might have figured it out.
Teacher elementary enrollment.
Dale Street?
Dale Street, probably.
Dale Street's next.
Dale Street's next.
So, the Dale Street project, we have our next meeting with the school building committee at the end of the month. So, we're doing the last Wednesday of every month. We're still working on the RFP now for our OPM. We have lots of acronyms in there. And Michael and I have been working with Mike Quinlan on that. And Leo, if I have anything, anything else to add, but.
No, I think, I don't think we've had a meeting since last.
Yeah, since we haven't. Yeah.
School committee.
So, I think at our next school committee meeting, we'll have more information to, what was that other form we had, Michael? We had another form we had to submit with the board's selectmen?
Yeah, so.
They signed off on that.
Was there a enrollment? It was their own form, wasn't it?
We did that one already. It was a different one.
Yeah, so we're waiting for the official minutes to be certified.
Okay.
And then have to send that to them.
All right. I know, I know that Brian sent an email this week about that, so. So, yeah, we're in good shape with that. In terms of the elementary enrollment, I put in your packet our numbers that we've had. We actually had some folks that were in morning, half-day, switch out and go into full day, because there was some spots open. So, the most updated numbers are there in your packet. We're still at, I think, one eighty-five. Let me just pull that up.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we're still at one eighty-five right now for, for kindergarten enrollment.
On the narrative.
So, just in terms of going back to FY twenty and, and those reductions that we put in there for the three percent, when I'm looking at that, those eight point five FTEs, we have fifty-two teachers that are non-professional teacher status right now. They're in years one, two, or three. So, to make up that five hundred thousand, it would have to be eight point five of those folks. We did not factor in the additional kindergarten teacher. We feel like we need to have that. We did not factor in the halftime special education teacher that we have. And we left those in the FY twenty and looked at other areas to remove those, those teachers. So, that's just an aside. But we feel it's important that the kindergarten position stays in there, and also those special education ones that we had added for FY twenty. So, it becomes more problematic. We start looking at programs and teachers and class sizes and all that stuff that got us into where we were last year in FY nineteen. And to subtract all that just seems ridiculous to me.
It's poor, it's poor management long-term, because we do have this increase in kids coming
Right.
very soon. And, yeah, we, to undo that work and then to just have to redo it again and kind of fight the same fight is pretty
Or to say that we think it's okay to have twenty-eight, thirty kids in a classroom.
I, I think it more reflects a
I think we've already had that conversation.
general skepticism about the enrollment projections.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's skepticism about the enrollment projections. We can only do, we, we have the kids we have, so.
Yeah, we have the kids we have. And, you know, we didn't do the enrollment projections. And we have two separate outside agencies that did them. And they both came up with the same, you know,
Right.
conclusions, so.
Lacking a crystal ball, or being able to go out.
I could have used one of those a couple of years ago, a crystal ball.
Right.
Chris had mentioned he was gonna get one for me for Christmas, and I never got it, so.
You did.
Oh, it's your fault?
Yeah, put it in the mess. Somebody must have taken it off your front porch.
I did, I did need that crystal ball to see what the enrollment was going to be. So, anyway, so we'll keep up to date with that. That's gonna be ongoing. And then, you know, as we make any other changes, I'll, I'll keep you informed. But that's really something that has to be on our agenda going forward, as we get more and more children moving in.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Next is donations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we have a few donations for, actually, that I asked you that you approve. For the Memorial School, three thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars to Memorial Gift Account from Memorial PTO to cover the cost of field trip buses. For the Wheelock School, eight hundred five dollars to the Wheelock Gift Account from the Wheelock PTO for the Mobile Ed Earth Dome presentation. Six hundred ten dollars to the Wheelock Gift Account from the Wheelock PTO for the young audiences of Massachusetts John Manning Historical Presentation. And five hundred fifty dollars to the Wheelock Gift Account from the MCP Fall Ball Fund to Grant for the Boston Museum of Science Animal Adaptations Presentation. I asked that you approve those as presented.
So, moved?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And superintendent's report to the committee.
So, just a couple of things. Administrative search update. I have a handout, but I left it at my desk, so I had to scribble this down. I'll send this to you tomorrow. But just the timelines for the principal search. So, the principal search has been posted. We have fifteen applications so far. Chris Martis will be running that search and facilitating that. Met with the staff at Wheelock School already to talk to them about it, get, to get some input for what they're looking for. A letter will be sent to families the week of two twenty-five, which will get, get input and have people that want to, you know, participate in that process to do that. We'll do our initial meeting with the screening committee on the week of March eleventh. Interviews will be in the weeks of March eighteenth and/or site visits, the week of eighteenth and twenty-fifth. And then we expect an appointment the week of April first for the, for the principal. The other, Director of Instruction Innovation, which is the name that I've called it, and what will be posted this week. Posting this week with the closing date of March fifteenth. Our initial meeting will be the week of March twenty-fifth. Interviews will be the week of April first. And we hope to have an appointment the week of April eighth. So, kind of aggressive timetable there. But we want to get out before all the other positions are posted in April and May. Many places are gonna wait for town meetings and budgets to be approved before they post. And we want to get ahead of that, so that we get the best candidates. So, I do have this all written off. I'll send it to you in an email tomorrow, so you have it. But that's what we're doing. It's great to have Chris on board. Chris has done a zillion searches as a superintendent, as an outside consultant. So, he's gonna be a real big help for this and help to manage that. You know, I'll be there for the initial meetings. But certainly, Chris will run the process. With that being said, we typically have one or two members of the school committee on those searches. So, start thinking about that as well, and who would like to be a part of that process, either one of them or both of them. We can certainly make that happen.
Will Chris be running both of those searches or just the principal?
He will.
Okay.
And then informational items. I put in your packet a couple of things. One is from Massachusetts Coalition for Special Education Funding. So, this was the critical need to fund Circuit Breaker. And it was a petition that was given to many of the legislators who are looking at this, especially based on Governor Baker's budget that came out, that only funds Circuit Breaker at sixty-eight percent. Remember, that fully funded Circuit Breaker is at seventy-five percent. So, I just wanted to pass this along to you to show you the amount of people, Mary and I also on this list, that, that signed this. And we're hoping that in the next couple of versions of the, the budget, the Senate and the House, too, that we start to see a rise in Circuit Breaker. You know, if we're not going to get the money, because we're not, in the Chapter Seventy reform, because as Jeff Riley says, no one feels bad about Medfield, except for Medfield. The, the chapter, excuse me, the Circuit Breaker is really the way that it's gonna help us out with helping to offset those costs. What we're trying to do with MASSS, the Mass Association of Schools for Pretendants, is to also include the cost for transportation in that Circuit Breaker calculation, which is not the case right now, because we all know, as, as Chris mentioned before, that's a huge cost to school districts. And we can't put that in the claim. And they want to, they want to change that formula, so that we can do that and get some reimbursement for that as well. So, we're hoping for seventy-five. It's at sixty-eight now. And I'll keep you posted on that. But that's gonna be something that is gonna be a hot topic in the next couple of months going through the process.
It's at sixty-eight now?
I'm sorry?
It's at sixty-eight now?
It's at sixty-eight right now. It's at sixty-eight right now.
So when we budget for this, Jeff, so you projected in the budget sixty-seven. That's paying, that's money that you expect to come in in twenty-twenty?
So we're always a year behind.
In FY twenty?
Right. We're always a year behind. So that's, yeah, so we, we would, like, for instance, we're typically conservative with that, where even on years when it was seventy, it ends up being seventy-one or seventy-two, we budgeted in the high sixties, and that additional money comes in to offset more special education costs. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed it'll at least be seventy-two.
But I guess that's what my question is, so the budget we've built for FY twenty is based on.
On sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
It is.
And we don't, that money doesn't come in until midway through the fiscal year?
Comes in quarterly. So we, the problem is, we don't usually find out until July.
Okay.
That's the issue, is that we have all these, and that's the challenge that we face with the school budget, I mean, we're making decisions now for the next year at this time, right? I mean, and we're making decisions at town meeting at the end of April, when the state budget isn't completed yet, and we don't find out those numbers until July, so.
Right.
It's a challenge.
As a school committee, should we be also discussing whether we can write a letter in support of.
Absolutely.
Keeping that, so, is there something we have to, can we talk about that now, or do we need to put it on the agenda, which would of course be too late? Well, not necessarily too late.
I mean, I think you can talk about it now, and, 'cause it relates to what we're talking about, and then decide whether you want to do that. I mean, I think that's appropriate, you know?
I personally move that we write a letter in support of funding the new foundation budget at seventy-five percent and also including special ed transportation within that formulation. And we can send that to Representative Garlic as well as the.
Representative Dewey and Senator Feeny.
Senator Feeny, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
So I move that, does anybody second that?
Second?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fabulous. Thank you, Jeff.
Even if it is funded at seventy-five percent, which I think is unlikely, that'd be a net gain of, it won't do much to solve our budget problem, it's about a sixty-four thousand dollar gain. If it's funded at seventy-two percent, it'd be about a forty thousand dollar gain, so.
But it does shift and loosen things.
It does, I just, I just don't want anybody to misapprehend that that, that there's a whole big pot of money there.
Right. But again, it's also the moral obligations we have to the children that we need to serve. I think we all feel that way.
So the second item that was in for informational items I just put in was a letter that Jason Belik got from MMA, just letting him know that they will no longer support the stipends for chamber string ensembles. And, you know, I've said it before, I think I said it at the public hearing as well, this is a negotiated item that we're working with the association with. There's no one on our side that has any disagreement that we want to fund this, but really, there's a schedule that the association put together, whether they're gonna do academics and sports, and they had in their mind during negotiations what year that would be. So this does not fall into this year. I have strongly advocated for them to think about that and add that into this year, because we don't want our teacher who is doing this particular program not receive a stipend. So I just, I think, I know I want to put in your packet, so you had a copy of it, but that's an ongoing conversation that I'm having with the subcommittee that's looking at stipends, which I will bring you in executive session at some point, because it is negotiations, and we hope to have that finished by May. But that, you know, it really doesn't fall on Jason, and it really doesn't fall on us at this point, it's really working with the association to, and the union to get that.
How much is the stipend that MMA is, was funded for the current fiscal year?
I think it was three, three thousand, I'm not positive, I don't.
Around three thousand.
We have a, I think it was around three thousand three five hundred, something like that.
It's just one stipend for one person?
Yes.
Until they've been funding it year over year, I guess?
Yes.
Yes. Very generous, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, they, they thought it was gonna be a short term and ended up being longer term. But the thing is, it's not something that we can just put in the budget, because it's a negotiated item.
Yeah.
It talks about an agreement with the former superintendent, that.
This is a union.
It's a, it's a, but that'd be something that the school committee would have to vote on, because it's part of collective bargaining, it's not just, we can't just wave a magic wand and say, "Okay, we're not gonna pay this anymore." It's a negotiated item.
This didn't come to the table and they were doing the budget, I mean, they were doing the contract?
It did, so we had, so we allocated a certain amount of money for the next three years to deal with stipends.
Oh, I see.
So that's what we're working on right now. So it can easily be part, and it's in our FY twenty already, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Easily can be done, it's just whether or not they want to do that.
Want to put this position into one of the stipends that, so our stipends in the collective bargaining agreement are behind, we're substantially behind other districts.
Sure.
So it was our, one of our priorities and the union's priorities to try to bring those current, but we couldn't do it all in one fiscal year. So we broke it up into the three years of the contract, and it was, it was the union's role to sort of recommend us which positions to take up at which time, and we would negotiate the stipend for each position, but they're rolling out which position. So in their view, this position was for a future year, not to discuss this year.
Okay, and, you know, what we're trying, what we're running into now, as we're going through all this, so we spent a year prior to negotiations, it was a small subcommittee of teachers and myself, looking at stipends across our comp districts. So we use comp districts as Westwood, Hoppington, Holliston, and Wayland. So those are our comps when we do all of our negotiations, and we took all that data, and you start getting into the stipends where Wayland might have one that Medfield doesn't, but we call it something else, and so we're trying to tease all that out right now. And then there are other stipends that have never been put in the contract, that the union would like in the contract, that we're trying to work through a little bit, so.
Yep.
It's been a long process, and, again, we're on year two going through it, but it really, I mean, there's no disagreement, I think, for any of us with this, it's just trying to get the part of that process.
There's also no surprise that that agreement with Mr. McGuire, this is not a knock on him, he was a people person, so he would make agreements that sometimes didn't always get reduced to writing. He'd been, he was here for twenty years and had the ability to do that, so.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All righty, future agenda items, FY twenty budget?
And we'll have an update for the Medfield twenty twenty-one, we'll have an update on that. The leadership team and I have been working on updating all the goals and where we're at and all that, so I'll give you a status report.
Oh, good, great, thank you. Our next meeting is March eleventh, but any closing statements?
So just a reminder, we're meeting with warrant committee.
The twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
That's in the public.
I believe it's in public safety. I do.
Maddie, comments?
I think the reps, the other reps kind of covered everything. They didn't mention, though, that right now we're working on, yesterday we started, people can start buying hearts for, kiss the senior goodbye, so at the end of the week, seniors will be sent hearts, and the money will go to.
Dana Farmer.
Dana Farmer, right? Yeah.
You can give them to sophomores, too, I hear.
And one of the juniors is gonna dye his hair if we raise enough money, so.
Wait, say that again, please.
One of the juniors is gonna dye his hair if we raise enough money.
Okay, cool.
Maybe a soph, no, junior, I want to say junior.
Okay.
But yeah, so I think it's fun, I think the seniors are really excited to actually feel like seniors. Right now, we're not feeling totally like seniors, but we're getting there.
Not yet. Not yet.
But yeah, and then I can't wait for the snow day on Wednesday.
Yeah, I know.
Nice, Maddie.
Boy, how quickly they turn.
But yeah, that's all.
You know what, take next one, Zio, okay? Just take that one, you'll be all set.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, boy, I'm up now. I think my head is frozen and my body's frozen. It just, it was very good to see the robust conversation this evening, this is why I stepped forward to be on the school committee, I really appreciate Nat and Norla coming and talking about the curriculum and the changes, and just even on the tales of Anna Mae, bringing in some of the questions that she gets from people regarding things like standard-based grading. It's just good to be part of the conversation that's ongoing, and I relish it. I might not say much, but I'm taking it in, I'm learning, and I'm processing, and I'm glad to be part of it.
Thank you.
Is this your goodbye?
No, no, no.
Okay.
And I don't give people a chance to say much in between, anyway. I just want to reiterate how important I think it is that we do move forward with the SCL task force of studying and create our own recommendation and policies with respect to the secondary day. I think, you know, that's been, I sort of, and I've said this before, I feel like that's sort of incented committee for too long, because I, once it comes here, it's gonna be a long discussion with the community, and, you know, there are, change is hard, and if we believe it's the right change, it's gonna take some time and a lot of discussion, so I'd like to see us accelerate that, and I do want to reiterate, I do think we're a district that can and should be doing conferences K to twelve. I think our teachers want to do that, I think it's just a matter of helping them understand how they can. And it's, obviously, it's a lot harder, we're a big, it's a big high school, so it's not easy, but I think even if you had one conference, you don't need to do it every term, if you have one, you know, one each semester, or even one in a year, I think would be a huge